By the United States of America.
And.
One nation under God.
In this.
Yeah.
So, Gini's out, everybody else is here. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make them listen to the agenda. I'll say, Hennett.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have people signed up to address the board? I didn't even look. Apparently, we do. We have Lily, is it Ogley?
Oi.
Oh, hi. Okay, there you go. And Ashley Gomez?
I'm gonna introduce these two. So I'm gonna be the health sciences teacher and these are two of my host and students, Ashley and Lily, and they're just here to give you guys a brief presentation. And they are working on competing at state for hosted state leadership conference and they're competing in the category called community awareness. And so their task is to find a healthcare or a medical topic and to present a need basically that relates to one and I'll let them reveal it to you guys. And so they're gonna give you guys a brief presentation. They do have a packet of some research that they have for you guys to look through. And then once they're done with their presentation, if you guys have questions or any comments that you'd like to make, they would love feedback. So that they can document it in their portfolio when they send it off to their state conference.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? What is the hosta?
Hosta is the CTS though, like FFA is attached to ag, hosta is attached to the health sciences program. It used to stand for health occupation student transformation. Now they let go of that term and they just call it hosta. So that's what we are. Thank you.
Oh, you have.
We have the letter.
Oh, yeah. No, it's okay. It's I'll put it over here.
Thank you.
The same.
There's a little bit.
Oh, this one has more. Thank you. Good ladies, whenever you're ready.
Dear Prosser School Boy Youngers, thank you for taking the time to listen to our presentation. As a part of our state leadership host of conference project, want to bring attention to your, want to bring your attention to House Bill 1273. And offer assistance to supplement your responsibilities. Over the past year, we have noticed a lack of available menstrual products in Prosser School. Personally, the experience of having to go to the nurse to ask for menstrual products is unwanted and takes up a class time. House Bill 1273 was passed on April 10th, 2021 and basically implemented in the 2022, 23 school year. It's typically set by the beginning of the 2022, 23 school year. School districts and private schools must make menstrual hygiene products available at no cost. Which should be provided in all general neutral bathrooms and bathrooms designated with male students located in schools that serve students of any grade. The school building serving does not have a gender neutral bathroom. Then the products must also be available and at least one vacuum that's accessible to male students. Or is the school health room that is for all students. The school has increased three through five, both school districts and private schools must make menstrual hygiene products available in a school health room. Or another location as designated by the school principal. The House Bill additionally states that schools are to provide pads and tampons, which means that they themselves must bear the price of such items. However, schools and non-profit and community-based organizations should provide such products. During a walk-through at Houseville Middle School, we found that there are six female bathrooms and one gender neutral bathroom. Of those seven bathrooms, four have patented tampon detectors. Thanks to the janitorial staff at Houseville, we're very happy to have been supplied with those needed products. At Prosser Medical, we found five female bathrooms and two non-binary bathrooms. All of which are not supplied with necessary menstrual products. Providing menstrual products is vital for students, especially in our school district. In Prosser School District, seventy-four point six percent of students are considered low income. While some of us have the luxury to go to the grocery store and pick up a box of pads and tampons. Many individuals do not have the same opportunity. Without the availability of pads and tampons in bathrooms, students are forced to go to the nurse's office or leave school due to feeling uncomfortable. Providing menstrual products has been found to have an impact on education. And students without access are left to feel uncomfortable and unable to focus on class.
According to the OSPI record, there are seven hundred and seventy-two female students and one non-binary today in the sixth through 12 inner school mission. On average, a female menstruates every twenty-eight to thirty-two days, which is about once a month. Typically, three to five tampons or pads are used per day during the menstrual cycle and a menstrual cycle can last up to seven days. This totals to around fifteen to thirty-five menstrual products per cycle. During. For a thirty-two count of pads or tampons, they currently cost around seven dollars. Our district is composed of seventy-four percent, seventy-four point six percent of low income. For this population, a seven-dollar box of tampons. And pads per month can be a significant financial burden. At the head of our hosted state leadership project, we are tasked with a goal. Our goal is community awareness is to maintain a one-hundred percent supply of the necessary. Our goal community awareness is to obtain a one-hundred percent supply of necessary menstruation products. In sixth through 12th grade and female and non-binary bathrooms for the rest of the school year. We would like to offer our assistance in providing necessary menstrual products. To fulfill this goal, we will post pads and tampons both in our community and our school. The drives will be, the drives will supplement the immediate needs of this middle school and high school and school district. And take over this responsibility. And to make these drives possible, we want to have the community to partner with Musting, Musting and Cooper Digital. Our plan is to host the drives the second week of January at Prosser High School and in Verhas local businesses. After acquiring the supply of products, we hope to stop the bathrooms in them. We hope to stop the bathrooms in temporary containers. To fulfill the needs of Prosser students and to comply with the House Bill, we suggest you have Prosser School work. To provide the necessary menstrual products for each female and non-binary bathroom. In the packet we have included a suggested dispenser. While the cost of, while the cost of was very few. We're providing, you are providing students with ease and accessibility of menstrual products. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak about this pressing matter and we look forward to seeing an active and positive factor factors.
Thank you, ladies.
You did a great job. So I, I just wanna say, so we purchased these items to comply with this house goal at the beginning of the year. And we were able to get dispensers, but maybe we weren't be able to get dispensers for all of our bathrooms. So I'm not, not sure about that, but I, our maintenance director is here and I think we've been purchasing those items. But maybe they're not everywhere.
It kinda got put on hold and pretty couple in at the middle of school.
Okay.
They got emptied right away within two days.
I know the middle school had a little trouble with behavior issues in the bathrooms, so the high school doesn't have any. But we have the dispenser.
We have the dispenser.
Okay.
They just need to be installed.
Do we have enough for all the ba-, all the bathrooms the girls are asking, or do we need more than that?
I think we got enough.
Okay.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
You guys did a great job putting all this information together, so I commend you both.
Excellent girls.
What's the next step for you then?
I think there's information about dispensers being purchased. I think we still plan to move forward with the drive because it sounds like moving, bringing forward the dispensers in the bathroom test taking some time. So we'd still like to move forward with starting a drive, maybe not making it as widespread as we were planning, but definitely bringing awareness to period poverty.
Okay. And have you turned this, have you, have you submitted this?
No, we have not.
But and that's going, that's the next step as far as this document, you're gonna submit this?
Yes, we submitted in February.
Very, very well done.
Maybe before you guys start your drives, we can have you. Meet up with, I don't know, maybe Deanna or somebody and you guys could have a drive for something else, cuz if it's our responsibility to cover it, and I didn't realize it wasn't. Then it's our responsibility to cover it, so. Maybe you guys could use your time for something else and they both get done anyway, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hang on. I think you guys spoke with such grace and maturity on a topic that really freaks out half the population. I have a question. What about the elementary school? Girls, you know, puberty is starting earlier, seven, eight, nine years old. Why not discuss or think about reducing the stigma that those girls face in the elementary school by having dispensers? In those bathrooms as well? Cuz I mean, it's already horrifying if that's happening to you at any age. If you're seven, eight, nine years old, it's awful, really. And to, you know, at least see it in the bathroom as opposed to, okay, I've gotta go to the principal, my teacher or somebody, I mean, at least it's, you know, something you see every day, your friends see it every day. And I would encourage that as something to, to think about, and I think you guys did a wonderful job.
Yeah. Thank you.
I've got a question. This, would you say bill, whatever, what's the number?
House Bill 1273.
Okay, and that's saying the schools are to provide free menstrual products for all the people that need them? They would be free.
Yes.
Is that why they're taking them home? Taking them home and supplying themselves at home? That's why at the middle school they were all crafted and drawn?
No, I, I think there were kids horsing around at the middle school.
Okay. I remember back in the day, it used to be put a quarter in, there you got your dilly walker, great fun. I didn't know it was supposed to be, what is going to affect?
It passed on April 10th, 2021.
Okay. Interesting.
We chose to move forward with this because we have seen the change and we were sure the board was aware of this. This is why we decided to choose to move along with the drive.
Any other questions or? All right, we're good. Thank you, ladies. Sarah Miller? Up there, it'd be great.
I think, should we move that so people online can hear?
I didn't think of that, yeah, please. Didn't even occur to me.
Let's see how far. It's like how I rig up my Christmas tree lights.
Is the camera turned? Is that, is that camera turned on to the speaker? Okay.
Okay. So I just have a couple of things that I wanted to talk about tonight. The first one is, I'd like to propose that the district starts over with a decision process for choosing the sex education curriculum. I have several reasons for that. Number one is I feel like the group of parents and staff that were involved did not really get to add their input. As they were only given options of curriculum from Deanna and had to choose from those options. My understanding is that curriculum, the curriculum flash that is being proposed. Is not able to even be reviewed by the board without being purchased, and I do not feel that our district is in a financial situation to do that. The bottom line is, there are many other options. I've found at least four good options that I feel that should be looked at. We also have the option of coming up with our own curriculum as well. I've reached out to several of our local districts and I have. Options of what they have already chose for their schools, as well as Sunnyside is one of them that for their high school, they made up their own. I know that that takes a lot of work and a lot of time, probably not something Prosser really wants to do. But yeah, at the same time, I do not feel like we should settle on flash and I want to suggest that. I hope that you take that all into consideration. The second thing I wanna talk about is, I would like to know. What the procedure is for inclement weather and calling delays and school closures. This Monday, it was really slick out. Lots of schools called delays. I feel like Prosser should have. They didn't. Or actually, yeah, they did not call a delay on Monday. AM tritech was canceled and parents were, Prosser District were not notified. I only knew because I got a call from Kennewick. Good thing they have my number on file because my kid doesn't go to Kennewick. And also the day before Thanksgiving, the freeway, I-82 from here to Tri-Cities, it was a sheet of ice. I can tell you that because my husband works for another school district and on his way to work, it was not good. There were cars in the ditch. The road was glass. Prosser District sent the early morning AM tritech bus to school without checking that out. That should not have happened. I feel like safety is slipping through the cracks. And this is emergent and I think the board needs to address the procedure and find out, number one, who's in charge to call these decisions? Number two, are they doing their job? And number three, do we need to have more people involved? Because I don't feel like it's being taken care of, and I feel like I'm positive that all of us care about our kids. We all want them to get to school safe and get, get home safe. So I just would like that to be addressed.
Well, not to play devil's advocate, Ami checks the roads and makes the calls.
So how is she able to drive all the roads by herself? And, and I'm gonna give you an example.
Three?
I'm gonna give you an example. Richland School District, they have, there's about at least five people that have their hand in the pot. They all go out in the morning and they all drive a certain route and they talk on the radios while they're doing it and they all make a group decision. There had been some bad decisions made this year. I feel like more people need to be involved.
For, for every time somebody comes in and says, man, it was too slippery, there's the time where they say, well, you called it and it was, it was cleared up by eight o'clock. So you're never ever gonna make, cuz we've, I've already had calls about, well, it wasn't that bad. Why did we call school off?
Well, for example, the other day, the last two-hour delay we had, I can't recall what day it was. I don't have the day written down. Even with a two-hour delay, my kid's bus was fifteen minutes late cuz the roads were bad.
I, I don't disagree. I'm just saying. No matter which way you go, there's gonna be calls the other way that somebody, somebody's trip to work, what, wasn't that bad at all? I don't know why.
So, so does, does she even drive the freeway? Because I talked to her that day.
I don't know if she drives.
And I'm pretty sure from our conversation, she did it and she had no idea, but the bus was already gone. That's not okay.
I can't speak to that part. But I do know that she's out at oddly hours in the morning and makes the call, so.
What I can do is, I don't. I don't know her route, per se, like what road she drives and what road she doesn't.
They all need to be, they all need to be checked out. Every road that our, that our kids are gonna travel on need to be checked, so if it's too much for her, what I'm saying is, we need to get more people involved.
There is, there is a kind of a network of transportation directors. And so between Prosser and Grandview, there are text messages and Mapton and Kybe and Patterson. And so.
And are we certain that all of those people are actually going out and driving the roads? Cuz I don't think they are.
Yeah, I can, I can ask Pete Peterson, the super Kybe, you know, he's driving the roads personally.
Okay.
On, on that day, on that Monday that you're referencing. There was a number of districts that said they were on time. I know for a fact in Kybe's case, they were on time until he got into Kybe and slid through the intersection. So sometimes calls are late. It's, it's a. I would say that it's more of an art than it is a science. We have a huge bussing route and it's not always gonna be perfect. The buses are slower. We, we tell the bus drivers to actually like. Receive with caution, go slow, right? You don't have to, it's not a race to get the kids to school. At the bottom, at the end of the day, it's, we really do consider safety. We've called off sporting events because of that, realizing that it's not just. And it's exactly what you're saying. It's not just buses, it's students on the road as well. And so that factors into our decision. Another one is that adults are commuting into Prosser. Used to be that a majority of our teachers lived in our community, shopped at our stores, attended our churches. That's changed, and so people now commute in and so can they get here on time? What are the roads like in Yakima? They may be driving from Yakima. So, yeah, it, we will. I'll find out what route she, she drives. I'll say that we'll try harder, we'll do better. It's. It's a tough, it's tough. I mean, those calls are tough. You're gonna have parents angry both ways about like, I wasn't planning on childcare today. But at the end of the day, we do consider safety. If we feel like it's safe to run, it's not to say it's without hazard, right? We know that this time of year, it is, it is slick, but. Yeah, we, we try and make the, the best call that we can. I work with her, there are conversations between transportation directors and superintendents going on at the same time. Sometimes you stand alone. Like Prosser's done that before, says in Prosser's case, we're canceling today. We've done that. And in some other cases, it's like, well, Grandview's bad, Prosser's bad. We'll do a two-hour delay and kinda together strengthen numbers type of deal, but. Yeah, I'll, I'll check the route, like what she's driving. We'll add freeways to that.
Okay.
And I'll get back in touch with them.
Okay.
And Sarah, I'm not, not at all opposed to involving more people. I'm, I'm just trying to say that no matter which. No matter how the decision goes, somebody, you know, the, the day you're talking about, I remember leaving here, driving to work at, you know, quarter to five in the morning. And from like halfway to Grandview, all the way to Granger, it was nothing.
Yeah.
You know, coming out my driveway, that holy crap, I'm gonna be half hour late. This is horrible.
Yeah, and on the other side of Prosser, sometimes it's different. You just never know. I get that. I just feel like, there's, I just feel like it needs to be looked at, that's all. So I appreciate that. Thanks for looking into it for me. And I just wanted to say one more thing as far as the curriculum for the sex ed. I do have examples. If you guys would like those, I can send them, them to you. And then also if any of the parents are on Zoom and our staff that were involved in that group, if they'd like to reach out to me, they can.
As a group, we've looked up a couple as well, but if you have suggestions, absolutely.
I found some really good.
So I, to that, I spoke with the superintendent of North Franklin School District, which is Connell. And they did exactly what you're talking about, was that they designed their own curriculum. And it was great. It, it was positive for a few different, from a few different angles. Teachers got to know what they were teaching and the standards. And then they were able to really say, this is, this is what we're gonna teach, when and for how much time. And so we're gonna spend twenty minutes on this topic right here. And here are the activities. And so it is time consuming. The benefit of that is that teachers get paid to develop some of that. Right?
Yeah.
So there, there is some money involved there for their planning times and prep times and curriculum development, so. Yeah, just wanted to add that and I've, I've had conversations around that and people have asked me as well.
Okay.
Sarah, too, if, if you could send them to me.
Sure.
All of the curriculums that were reviewed were from the OSPI list, so it's certainly possible. There's curriculums out there that aren't on there.
Okay.
Lots of health curriculums, help, most of the companies that just have curriculum are very small and some are. They're not as well published and well advertised as ELA curriculums, math curriculums and some of those, so I'd appreciate you sending those.
Sure, I can do that.
And we're still working on it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they haven't, we haven't approved anything yet.
I think there's about four that I found that look pretty good that are not on that list. I looked at that list as well, so I'll send them out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing the work on finding some of the.
Yeah, no problem. Anything for the kids.
On the road, you know, going. Back in the day, I, the county, the school district would get ahold of the county and roads department.
Yeah.
To see when they're gonna go out and sand and be able to plow the roads. You know, up in the away country areas and stuff. Do you guys still do?
We still do, yeah. Yeah, and that's, that's another variable too. That, you know, you're talking, talking with the county and city and what arterial lines are gonna be plowed and sanded and, you know, salted or gravelled or whatever, and so. Trying to estimate, you know, like. Put a, put a, some type of timeframe on their work. And knowing that it impacts your work in the different routes and things like that, so yeah. I know that Amy, Amy cooks in communication with them and, yeah. You can't not be really, I mean.
No.
Yeah.
It changes fast too. I mean, I think it was. Thursday or something last week was at Goldendale midday, started calling parents to come get them quick.
Yeah.
So it happens. All right, thank you. Mark Bishop?
I am here to address the board. About the situation in parking lots and stuff. Maintenance is short-staffed. I've been director for four months now, I think. Nobody's filled my position in the maintenance, so I've been basically doing both, trying to do heating and, and stuff. I sent an email to Matt. October eighth, telling him I was a driver short for a plow. And nothing's happened, so. I'm done. I am submitting my resignation effective immediately.
That was heavy. All right then. Karen, Van Klinken.
Thought that was a sign sheet.
No, you have to get up and say something. So front row heard Karen Van Klinken, everybody say hi Karen. Okay, thank you. Kathy?
Well, I don't know why mine weren't sitting at the table, but I'll go sit at the table. My topic here is nothing quite as elaborate as the rest of you, but. I wanna bring it up and I told my kids I would bring it up, so here I am. I've got a granddaughter that plays basketball down at Kennewick. So we've been to many, many different schools and basketball games. And for some reason, we come to Prosser the other day, cuz they played the Prosser Girls and I would say, congratulations, Prosser Girls, you did awesome job. You beat our girls' butts, but that's neither here nor there. At all the schools in Tri-C's we've been to. To go in at the door is five dollars for adults, three dollars for students and seniors. You get to Prosser at seven dollars at the door. For adults and five dollars for students and seniors. Our kids came up, the two of my son and my daughter-in-law and two grandkids come up and what's normally sixteen dollars was twenty-four dollars to get in Prosser. Now, I don't know why. It's that high compared to where else, but. It's quite a bit higher, so. You know, it's kinda like, I don't know, are you guys? Short budget, overextended, where you have to charge that kinda money to people or what, what is it? Well, knock it off then. It's, isn't it? Yeah. I know, like I said, we've been to every flipping school in Tri-Cities in the Kennewick League and stuff, all the play and they're all five and three, five and three and. Yeah, so get to Prosser at seven and five. It's like, well, that's quite a difference. But anyway, that was it and, and also I wanted to make a comment cuz it was brought up. Your flag in the gym is beautiful. The motor needs to be worked on. It lowers that flag so slowly, the national anthem's completely over and done with before it gets down. And then back up and people are sitting there doing this kinda crap, like what's wrong with your motor? You know, so maybe you need to look at it cuz the gears stink and it's, it's slow, so that was it, like I said.
So where you go anywhere, right? Did it, does it have anything to do, so when we went to digital, if you paid?
Nothing to do with that.
Okay.
Price has always been the same and it's a decision by the league. So whichever league, so all of the Tri-Cities teams are in the same league.
Yeah.
Prosser and our league go that way and everybody in the league is the same ones.
Yeah, it wasn't a league, Gabe, it was a.
Correct, but what I'm saying is it's determined by the league, not by our school.
Okay.
Cuz I'm back in the interview, cuz you know, most of them, parents are traveling and they're going, playing two games a week. You know, so you're paying fifty bucks. A week just to watch your own kid play ball, you know, that gets kinda ridiculous.
Yeah.
And that flag deal, I checked down at Kennewick the other day, ours here, it is half.
It is slow.
So what you're saying is we start early.
And I told the family, I said, hey, we're paying for a new gym, just put Benji. You know, and they didn't really care.
So that was it. I just thought, I told them, I'll bring it up and see, but I never thought about that, different league, so that would make a difference right there. I, I went to my, my grandson's AU game, which used to be two dollars a one dollar, they're five dollars and three dollars to go to AU games now. Oh, well, we don't do that anymore. Oh, well, we don't do that anymore, so, yeah, so, thank you, that was.
Thank you, Kathy. Was there anybody online? Okay. Alright, so that's our visitors, guys, let's move on to consent items. Entertain a motion to approve the consent items. All in favor of approving consent items, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That then moves us to action items revised. And then the board, uh, reorganization, uh, is this an old one?
I thought we pulled that. No, we, we.
Oh, it's gonna table.
Yeah, okay, so the board, somebody will need to move to.
Give me the table for reorganizations. And the reason we're doing this, guys, is we are a member short tonight, so we will, uh, next meeting. Make the vote for, uh, who leads and vice presidents on for the board. So the next on the list of action items is the approved nominations for the student born rep appointments. You do it or we do it, I don't remember.
Uh, you can, I think that there's a small write-up, and so this is, just see, just the approval of. You'll take action to a point and they'll be sworn in, but since we went into executive, uh, session to discuss. Um, this is a formal kind of making up your mind on the appointment of the student, student representatives.
Okay. Anybody wanna jump in and nominate them?
We have a list of names, I don't have my sheet.
Alright, well, also.
I'll make a motion to, um. Approve the nominations for this, uh, student board rep appointment. Um, the candidates who applied were Noah Dempsey, are they here tonight? No.
I'm here.
Noah Dempsey, uh, Bianca James, and Christina, um, Rubacava. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Rubacava, uh, if you're here, will you please stand? Okay, the board will need to move to approve the candidates selected for appointment. If approved, the board will take action to appoint the selected board rep at the next regular meeting, which will be December twenty eighth.
We talked about, um. Turning our work session into a special board meeting. Um, because there are a couple approval items that we'll take action on, if the board's fine with that, we'll bump it to that meeting instead.
On the twenty eighth?
Um, no, it's next, uh, next Wednesday, which I believe is twenty six, twenty first.
Okay. Be available on the twenty first. Okay, so I made a motion.
Second.
All in the favor of the three appointments, please say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Alright, next on the list, vouchers and payroll. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions? No, I think it's first. Oh, you were still reading, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I'm good.
Alright, uh, hearing no questions, all in favor of approving the vouchers and payroll as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that moves us to the elementary SIP plans. Uh, this one's for Heights and Witstran.
I moved to approve elementary SI, uh, school improvement plans for Foster Heights Elementary and Witstran Elementary.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of approving the two SIP plans, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, alright, out of state travel, this is E, out of state travel for the two thousand twenty-three annual teacher clarity playbook conference. Motion to approve?
I moved.
We have a second?
I'll second, but I have some questions.
Alrighty. So with a motion and second, do we have any questions?
Um, yeah, I was looking.
If we could just make the wording on this a little smaller.
So look, read through the. Um, summary of the, of the out of state travel. I know, um, I think it's, it's great that we're doing it, and I I get it, but. I I think the elementary schools, or at least Witstran, I think now all the elementary schools are starting to do the same type of thing. Um. Why would we not have all of them go?
Um, so there's a a couple of reasons, um, I I would like them all to go. When I take all the principals out of the district at one time, that can be a, a challenge, but the elementary is really, that. They're working on this as well, uh, and we had a lot of elementary teachers attend the training that we provided, but, um. They're, they're spending a lot of time and really working hard on implementing ARC. Um, our reading program, and so it just seemed like a big ask, I'm happy to take them. Um, to go with us as well, they know principals participated in the training that we did. Um, I, I, in walkthroughs and being in classrooms, I I see the, the, the targets and success criteria written in elementary as a little. A little more on target, um, but yeah, I'm, I'm gonna take them all, I'll take them, Matt, Matt will cover, cover all the buildings.
Well, the reason I say that is I think, you know, what could go wrong?
Yeah, exactly.
I think it's only three days, um, two days, about three days.
Yeah.
Um, but, but I think, you know, as the elementary start implement or have implemented this type of program, and we move it to. You know, the high school and middle school. You know, the way I, the way I envision education is that the foundation is built at elementary. And you get what you get in middle school and high school, and now you're just trying to catch them up or or keep them going, right? Um, but the foundations have to be built in the first five grades before they move on, so that's why I asked the.
Well, and this is something teachers do, not necessarily the kids, but the, all the teachers need to know how to do it. Um, if you feel comfortable with me taking all five principals, I'd be, love to take them all.
I would say, so I'd add to that, and you're, you're spot on. Um, the idea about start ahead, stay ahead, right? Um, so, part of, part of the background is, is, is that Deanna has done a book study and worked through it with. Uh, instructional coaches and principals, and so it's really been around, um. Learning targets, success criteria, trying to provide clarity about what, really what we're teaching, right, and how we're gonna assess that learning. Um, I think when we're looking at conferences, we can send everybody, and of course, that would be, that would be best. Um, sometimes, people aren't here to man the ship, not saying that I can't do it alone, I think I'm Superman, but. Um, so sometimes it's good to have people stay back, and then it's almost a train, trainer model, kind of like we did with the safety and security. That your colleagues come back and you work in kind of collaboration with those people, and you say, here's what we learned. Now, the benefit of that is that it really, um, you know, solidifies and cement, cements all that new learning that people have gotten. Um, and then they can actually add to their colleagues' practice as well, and then by doing that, we can also identify other conferences. And send the elementary next time, and they can come back and do the same. Um, with, with their secondary people, but that's, that's it. What we're talking about is a little bit, um, at the discretion of the board, so if you want it, all principals to be trained. Uh, I'm sure that Indiana has the money and title too, we scaled back on consultancies. Um, so this is the other, other option around professional development, like, we have to, we're gonna go to those experts. Grab that information, bring it back, and then start implementing them in the district, so, and it does align with, not only a set of book study. But it does align with a lot of their school improvement plans, and, uh, you know, we're hopeful that. The outcomes of the strategic plan, it'll also fit into that as well, so.
And so, i- in one of the reasons, again, like I said, elementary has a lot on their plate right now, and with the middle school and the high school. Taking both principals means we're gonna come back and do the book study with the, with the teachers. Um, at those buildings, and I don't know that the elementary can take that on right now. Um, and in the training we provided, the majority of the teachers attended were elementary teachers. So, I think to start, and I, and, and this is a yearly conference, next year, we go with elementary and then pick up there. They also have a PLC playbook conference, it's supposed to be really, really good too, so. So, I, I, I appreciate question, it's.
Is, is this a training that would lend itself well to a train the trainer kind of a thing?
It is, because, um, it truly is a playbook, like it's modules, and you go through and they practice. And we have them practice with their own standards on writing targets and success criteria, and it's a difference between, it's really so that when kids. Are in class, if you walked in and talked to them, or when they walked in, they know what they need to know and be able to do before they walk out the door. And often, like, sometimes what kids know is, I need to do page twenty-seven. Not what they really need to know, what was important that they learned, and that's what it's really about, what is it important that you learn? In class today, and it, and be able to say, well, I didn't, maybe I didn't really learn all this, but I know I need to know it, so I'm gonna keep working on it.
I would tend to agree with Jason, it kind of has to be a bottom up, to be effective, but.
One move to approve honesty, oh, we already had a motion and a second, didn't we?
Yeah, we did, um. We're not in a place really, though, that it would be, it would work out to send everybody this year, is what you're saying.
Well, we could, just knowing that when we come back, like the elementary principals, I think it definitely would benefit them. We do have, you know, Cindy, Eric, we have people doing their internships that could cover the buildings, we have assistant principals are not traveling. Um, so I certainly could take them, I just don't expect it, that, I don't expect that to come back and, and implement that book study with elementary this year.
So there would be back in the district, Cindy, Eric, uh, David Funk, Rick Follett. Crystal Cole, myself, and then any principal interns.
We were fine.
So we can, we can man the ship, it's stressful when you're, when your principal's out, but it's for a couple days.
Yeah.
Um, if, if the board wants to send all the principals. We definitely can cover internally and we can marshal people to different, uh, different buildings.
But if we're not gonna implement it to grade school this year, it'd probably be just as cost effective to train them a little bit and then send them next year.
Yes and no, it, it would be, it would be not just cost effective, but if we, if, if they're gonna go, then we're going to do the book study. That look study with those buildings, and I think that they would be completely on board with that, and we do have teacher leaders in every building that have been through our training. That want to be, we asked them as part of the training, will you be willing to be teacher leaders and help in doing this training in your buildings, and they, everyone said yes, so.
The, the benefit in sending everybody is around the rollout and the launch of something like that. And so professional development, having some consistency and uniformity across buildings. And so when you're gonna roll that out, it allows for all the principals to sit together and say, here's what we learned, here's what we're gonna, you know. Talk to our staff and work with our staff on, and then there's some consistency there, instead of having it happen at the high school, and it's not happening at the elementary. And then people say, how does that even connect with, you know, we have these different and competing initiatives throughout the district, so.
It helps us too, when we're in classrooms.
I had a teacher reach out to me and tell me how incredible this program was, and said, I hope they think it seriously, and I hope they implement it, and it was the best. You know, thing that they had come across, I mean, I always heard Deanna, I want to send everybody, take everybody, I agree, it has to be bottom up, and I think, yeah.
What is it, my own?
Yeah, it's in, I can't remember, February, March, but in the February.
What is the trade?
Yeah, what are you teaching the teachers to teach?
It's, it's a, so there's a lot of research around, when you go in and you teach kids, for instance, they need to learn. Um, how to write an effective, uh, introduction paragraph. But we just tell kids they have to do it, and we tell them to do it, but they don't really understand why they really need to know that, why is that important? You're trying to catch the reader's attention, you wanna make sure that they wanna read the rest of what you're writing, it could be around math, like, why is it important that kids understand how to solve an equation? Why is that important? Um, so, it's so that kids can articulate and they really understand, because if we just tell them, you just need to know it because you need to know it. Doesn't mean anything, you know, a lot of kids, it's like, the kids that really wanna do well, they're like, I'm gonna learn it, doesn't matter if I don't know why I know this. So there's been a lot of research around making, helping kids, if you can help kids understand why they need to learn something and why it's important, they're more likely to learn it. So it's, so teachers can be really clear, instead of just saying, we're gonna read these ten pages, and we're gonna talk about the war of eighteen twelve, and then I need you to write. I need you to answer these five questions, it's why is that important, and why did that impact our country, why did that matter? So, it's, it's, um, it's about helping kids see repurpose once, so they'll want to do the work. And then they'll see why, why it would be important for them to know it, and it helps kids to hang on to the learning more. Get, you know, get a hold of it and want to learn it, and then they can articulate what they learned, which is another way kids can show their understanding. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that can, I, I ran into a lot of good teachers that have already know how to do that.
Um, and there are some that do, yeah, there are some that do. A lot of times, teachers and teachers do the very best that they can, but oftentimes, you'll see teachers writing, um. An activity as their purpose of their outcome, like completing a task or doing something. Not that you need to learn this, like, you really need to understand how to present a clear argument. Because this is gonna be important in your life, to having discussions with people, if you, you know, in work, if you wanna, you know, express your point of view, and kids is like, oh, I just have to write a paper. Well, why, why does it matter if you know how to do a clear argument with evidence, why does that matter? So that's really what it's about, kids really understanding them, why they need to learn something, why it's important before they walk out the door, not just, I'm doing this task.
Right, it's to help the teachers who aren't the better teachers to get to the.
Yes, for sure.
Okay.
That's good, maybe, uh, Ms. Wilson can kind of.
Yeah, um, I think that the work's important, um, they've done, they've done some book studies, my instructional coach had, is one of the leaders that's. Um, that knows it pretty well, and she was the one that led the training last year. Um, a lot of my teachers participated, and I got a lot of good feedback from it, so I, I would love to go to the training. But I, I agree with Deanna that I don't know if I can add that to my teachers' plate this year, just because we're, we are. So involved in ARC right now, but, but next year could be something that we could bring on.
And start at the beginning of the year, yeah.
So I have a few, like, I don't know exactly how many teachers, but a good handful of teachers that attended the training last year, that can also help to lead out that work in every level to be in the team.
So if we go ahead and approve this, because the, uh, the three of you are named. We would have to bring back another one, if you decide, or if it works out.
Just amend it, yeah, amend it.
Yeah, because travel, right now, I mean, this is a couple months away, even though that seems like a ways, it's a challenge right now, with flights and everything.
You're not necessarily approving who goes, just like when we do student out of state travel. It's not specific to these three kids, it's the fact that we're sending district employees.
That's gonna be horrible to be in San Diego in February.
Let's hope we can get there and there isn't some terrible weather.
There's a freeway. Yeah. Kidding. San Diego.
It's in San Diego.
Yeah, wouldn't it? It's a rough gig. Somebody's gotta do it, ain't that right, Bailey?
Yep.
Alright, so we have a motion, a second, um, all in favor of approving the out of state travel for the playbook conference, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, this brings us to the Carisola Service Agreement.
So, um, there were some, I know that, um, board member Riley asked for some feedback from the East Valley School District, I did contact the East Valley School District. Um, I was given a rural school district, um, as reference in California. I don't know the area around the school district well enough to know if that is very rural or not. Um, but I did speak to East Valley, spoke to their assistant superintendent, and, um, their head of, uh, they have a student service, support services director now. And they've had, only had it since November, but they are very happy with it, they've had, um, not only the twenty, they've had twenty-eight students that they. Supported at school with getting connected, so that the students can get connected to services, they've had like eight anonymous contacts with people calling. They've had four staff referrals, um, they've, they've had, they can. Um they've they've had, they can see the impact of people who didn't wanna walk in the office and ask for help. Um and uh like we talked about, this is them connecting with them with service. They have fourteen. Upcoming appointments. The first one was supposed to be yesterday, the day before, so it still does take time. But they are still, they are connecting with that. There's making those connections so that they can find those appointments. Parents have a hard time. Um a lot of service providers are one not, like they're not in a big organization or they're not. Um they're not uh part of a big group like Cadlec or PMH or something like that. So sometimes people have a hard time and they help with whatever that student's insurance is, or if they don't, if they're on Medicaid. Um helping them to find options so that it would match their ability to to pay for those services. And they do sliding scale and no fee too if a student doesn't have those those resources. Um Kristen Spocito is who from who's from Carisolus is here online in case you have any questions. But for what they said, for the cost, what they're seeing so far, they think it's completely worth it. Then I have something else I wanna talk to you guys about, but I will wait till the my report in relation to mental health, but since it's not here.
So I would actually like just to echo for a second to what Director Riley said last. Uh this is a tool, it's it's not an end all, and and I absolutely think we should continue on looking for.
You want me to add that in my right now?
Apparently.
Okay, cuz it's I mean, so um I have been working with the grant writer from the hospital. They have technically loaned that person to us to help find mental health. Um services. And they um came, we had a meeting earlier this week. I've been meeting with I with Megan Hope and Neil Riplinger. And um they really wanna support us and help us find resources. So they were able, she was able to find a company called Aluma. Um that would do the services. Like this is uh you know, connecting kids with services. Now, there's a process and onboarding and training, so it's not something that would happen tomorrow. But to pay to 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 do that service. For middle school and high schoolers, and this is probably in that market is uh would cost us about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. A hundred and thirty thousand dollars um would be what? We'd probably, we'd pay more than that in benefits. Um salary and benefits for an experienced. Mental health provider, someone who's certified, I'm sure we would pay more than that. But so they're trying, they're they're gonna help us go through finding grants and all of those things, but that could take a while. And so if is the district willing to support that cost, it's eighty seven dollars a student. And we would do that for middle school and high school students and keep Carisolus as well for. We'd still have that K through twelve. In case a student didn't come in, I think it's worth it for the seven or eight thousand dollars to have it and see how well it works for us for this year. Uh is the board willing to support the hundred and thirty thousand dollars to provide in its on demand mental health support?
So we'd have a, we'd have a.
We'd have.
Plan plus a backup.
And we'd have that, and that would be for students. So Carisolus is gonna cover. All family, still cover, can making connections for families, for staff, staff's families, because that cost. Covers really uh uh everybody connected to our district in that way.
And then the other would be just the individual students.
Would be individual middle school and high school students, correct? No.
I think it's so important to throw everything we can at mental health. When I listen to all these student representatives interview, they all said most important issue of mental health. Talk about. When Heather Morse came and spoke to us two months ago, what she's being as a mental health professional, I think it's very generous of the hospital. Any efforts for mental health.
I agree. So I um we are, well, we've been in communication, we're communicating regularly and we're still gonna work on the grant piece. Um but. If we are willing to pay for it, we could, you know, it's just the it's the contract process and onboarding. Um that would get us going much faster. Aluma.
L U M A, right?
Uh it's A L U M A. And there's another company called, uh it's it's Eluma, and there's another one called Aluma, A L L U M A. Um so it is the company that that they have found is Eluma.
So if you look it up and you see citing.
But they do the same thing, honestly, uh cuz when she told me the name, I Googled it and I'm like, oh, I found it. She goes, no, it wasn't the right one, so they're. Eluma. I'll send you guys a link. Um but I I would love to be able to proceed with that.
With the information as a discussion item.
Absolutely.
Sounds like a plan. All right, so.
Just to add to that, um with the cost, we would have to go out to. You know, open it up, determine what we're wanting and then go out to. So just something to consider.
And we can uh going out to bid and we can also, we can contact companies and ask them to bid.
Fair enough. All right.
It would be super fast, but it'd be a lot faster than waiting for a grant.
So back to the Carisolus agreement, did you guys have any questions that you wanted to ask? Kristin, I think is her name?
Yes.
Yep, I'm here.
How's your night going?
Good, good.
No questions from anybody?
I have just a question, and I don't know, I don't know if this is for um Kristen or not, but. You know, we got, we received a letter from our PHS counselors here a while back concerning mental health. Uh what is their opinion of the Care Souls?
I I I haven't had a conversation with with them about Care Souls. In particular, but they want any service we can get. If we can get um a remote service, anything that connect can connect kids with health. Because they're overwhelmed with it as well. Our counselors have like a list of resources, so when they, you know, if it's a crisis, they're going crisis response. And dealing with a student who might be in crisis. But if a if a student or parents asking for help, they can provide school support. They can't provide therapy. That's not within their license. And then they're saying, here's a list of resources we have. The parent has to go out and find them, so and see what they can get into, so. Um I'm happy to talk to them, but they're going, they, I I've talked to the middle, they're gonna be thrilled. I've talked, actually, I take it back. I had this conversation at the counseling workshop. Nanette was the only one there, but there are. The other two were counselors weren't able to attend, but she, they'll take anything.
Yeah, they would, I know they'll be excited about it.
Yes.
I know I talked to my wife and all the reason in Granby, she was familiar with it and said, from what she's seen, it's a solid plan. They did there again, oh, it is a tool. It's not an end all, so. No, we don't. That's where I was keep trying to get back to.
Move to approve the Care Souls Service Agreement.
And I would second that.
Hey, all in favor of the service agreement, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you so much, you guys. Have a wonderful evening. I know you're gonna be very, very happy with the service and it um covers board members and your families too. So have a nice night, you guys.
You too. Have a good evening. All right, that leads us to G, which is the Inspired Development Center amended or amendment to lease agreement. Everybody have a chance to read through it?
Yeah, I had a question. Is this going from a one to a two year? Cuz I thought we approved it about this time last year.
Yeah.
On a one year basis. Am I wrong?
Yeah, this is a just a renewal for another year from my understanding. Yes.
Would it be possible to bring it back with the current lease? We can take a look at that and compare.
Yep.
There's a typo in it.
Yeah, so so the context, um the just to just to provide kind of the background conversation. Inspire is um a migrant program. And so they currently rent, uh they lease land from us. They would like a long term lease agreement. Um we went back into negotiations with them and up the lease price. Um they still would like something that's a multi-year due to construction. Um we just didn't know how that was gonna roll out, and so at that time.
Yeah.
The board was only comfortable with a one year, one year lease agreement. We can get past uh past lease agreements and uh. Kind of load load those up and let the board compare and contrast. And then the the ultimate conversation is, do we want a multi-year lease or do we wanna stick with a one year lease?
This is the one last year in the consentage and that. There were two leases. There was a ten year that got in there and a one year. We were able to catch it and they wanted a ten year. Or maybe longer cuz they wanna finance new portable buildings. They couldn't finance them unless they had the longer lease. We were like, cuz it was like. Two hundred dollar a month payment.
Yeah.
So I'm interested in what the five seventy five is based on, is that, and that's just for the land and water use and electricity?
Yeah, they're actually on the same septic system and that's been a concern as well, too.
That was the biggest problem because the septic for that and Whitstrand were together.
They're on a well.
To the square footage.
Does a remodel change that?
I don't believe so. I mean, we're still at acceptable levels. In fact, I think we were maxed out, if I remember right. That was, we had, there was just enough. I don't remember if it was the amount of kids or the square footage, but I I think it maxed us out. To to expand it to the footprint that it is going to be, but we're still within.
It caused some limitations for us, didn't it?
A little bit, yeah.
But I'll bring that back.
So I, it's in number two, un- unless I'm reading it wrong and I entirely could be, but. Um it would terminate in this, you know, December thirty first to twenty twenty four. And so it'd go from a one year to a two year. Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, so let's let's compare.
Well, it says January one, twenty twenty two.
That's when it was approved.
Yeah, so this one would be January one, twenty twenty three through.
Twenty four.
Twenty four.
September twenty four.
For the all of twenty twenty three and all of twenty twenty.
Yeah, that's two years.
Okay, yeah, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry.
One move to table the lease agreement.
Yeah.
Good.
And do you just want last year's or do you want multiple to see how the property uh price increased as well?
I think I would, I would just like to see what we're amending.
Okay.
In fact, while we're on the subject, why don't we just plan on having uh. Whether it's the lease for here or like the the land out on. I don't even remember the road, the airport. Yeah, wait, there you go. Anytime they come up, we'll just have the old one.
Okay.
So we can. So we have a first and a second to table it until we have a chance to look at the past lease and. I guess discuss it more in the next meeting or something. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is that something tape? Amy, you can compare for us.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Who drafted the First Amendment to the lease?
They, uh I think they do the drafting and we do the changes, and so I believe Sean Mumford looked it over last year.
Good, no attorney looked over for us this amendment?
I don't know if it has went to Sean yet.
I know I've commented before, as long as it doesn't cost us anything, I don't care how long they rent it, but. If it's any money out of our pocket, we need to up it to make sure it's covered.
Since it does have to come back to the board, um request it to be one year, like to change the date for one year or to leave the date for the two years. For the December twenty twenty four. Do you have a preference?
I think I would like to see the 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 original lease. I don't know that we know right now if it's for one year or two year. I'm thinking it must be for one year and that's why they're wanting to amend it to two. So why are we going from one to two?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't know if they're, um do you have a preference when we are a concern one way or the other? If they're requesting two years, are we willing to give them the two years or if they're, you know, if it was a typo? That's an easy fix. I know it expires.
Clear, we were only doing one.
Okay.
Yeah, we were, we were knee deep in planning Whitstrand at the time and.
If it, we had a situation where we signed a two year lease and somewhere during this construction project, they said, okay, we we got a problem. We can't. Do what we were gonna do because of the septic and we now have a two year lease. And so we either have to buy out, I mean, the buyout is kind of de minimis on this for two years, but. You know, we don't wanna, our hands tied, I think, especially given the construction project and what's going on. I I would. Think we would want to stick to one year, but this particular tenant.
So make sure it's a one year and then bring back to back last copy and this copy. And we should be good to go. All right, so we tabled that. Second reading, policy and procedure thirty one twenty four removal, release of student during school hours. Everybody have their chance to read through this?
I move to approve the policy and procedure thirty one twenty four.
All right, was there any questions or comments? All right, hearing on all in favor of second and final reading of procedure thirty one twenty four, please say aye.
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 All right, so second and final reading of policy and procedure thirty two forty six, restraint, isolation and other use of. Reasonable force.
Lisa, I thought, uh, did we have a question on updating this? That last time we brought it here, wanted to make sure, cuz this is not, I I don't know if it's particularly up to date with all the new laws, but. Um.
There was something.
It was about removal of students was one question that came up without a warrant from the.
That's right, yeah.
And there've been significant changes in juvenile law that went into effect to make first, so we were gonna check into.
In fact, wasn't it that it said that the police could come in without a warrant or remove?
It says without a warrant, remove the student.
At at their discretion.
Yeah.
And then I think you pointed out that they can't even talk to them at this point without lawyers, so without them having done a crime.
You know, I think this, you know, I know this was the policy and they cover their backsides, but I wonder, did we check? With Wasta, this was completely updated with the new.
No, sometimes there is a lag between was the policies and law. Um so they don't, they don't all get updated at the same time. Um I can call Abigail Westbrook. Who is their lawyer and uh see if they have something that's more current. If we wanna table this one.
Yeah.
And move to table policy and procedure thirty two forty six to get clarification on. You know, updating uh any additional new laws that come up with, make sure we do it once and then. Have to come back and fix it.
Good. Hey, all in favor of tabling uh policy and procedure thirty two forty six, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, what do we got left? Addity renewal. This is, what is this?
It's the website.
Oh, that's right. Everybody read through it? Not a lot to read, but we currently use this. Today. Of like about a year, is this just to renew it?
But the initial price was about twenty, twenty four thousand dollars between twenty and twenty eight to set it up. How responsive are they when we? When we need something changed or there's something going on, are they pretty? As for like the backend, not too sure, but. Yourself, we do.
Yeah, we need hosting.
They're really responsive. They are. They both as using their chat feature and when I email them.
One move to approve the apt to apt to G renewal.
Any questions or concerns? Nothing else, all right? All in favor of the renewal, please say aye.
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 Aye. All right, that finishes up action items, which takes us to discussion items. So we're gonna look at the S I P plans for what?
So just before we launch into this, um both administrators at Housel from HMS. Um weren't able to make it tonight. Uh Michael just had. Uh so a medical thing that he was working on and Crystal is actually sick tonight. Um so we'll have to table that one and bring that back.
Boom it out to next.
Yep, next week. Um but. Uh our able administrator at the high school is here and from K R V, Jesse's here, so. Um we should have a great uh. A great presentation from them and and. Great Christmas show. Great Christmas show, the caroling last night, I was able to see um, Sue Bray. Uh, do all the Christmas carols with the little kids, and so she's did a phenomenal job and the parents loved it, so. Uh, it was kind of a neat time, so. Good job to all involved on that.
Bailey, what's yours?
Thank you, I noticed you put me first today because uh, as I talk a lot, uh, try to get me out of the way first. Um, I have already breezed past page one and two of the uh improvement plan, which is just some informational items. Uh, and we'll stop at page three. Page three is the Prosser High School, there's a clip of um. Of our demographics says eight hundred and ninety-nine students, that number is a little bit off. I put eight ninety-nine, I put this clip on here and refer to it as eight ninety-nine because that's the number that's reported on our report card. Um, and so to stay with O S P I reporting, I put that number on here, we're actually more closely to, more close to eight seventy. Uh, than eight ninety-nine at the, at the moment. Um. I, I will say that I'm gonna start here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak of my frustrations first of all. I'm, I've been very frustrated with this state, I've been very frustrated with our um, even myself. And I've had many conversations about this, uh, as an administrator, it is somewhat of a challenge to. To present your information in a way that um best portrays your staff, best portrays your students. While still acknowledging the deficiencies that you have, and uh, that's, that's a really challenging thing. Uh, especially when meeting after meeting, time after time, people refer to us as. As a disaster, as absolute failure, as the reason why we can't recruit people. Uh, we can't recruit people to our community because of the school. And it uh, it drives me a little crazy, especially at this particular moment. What we're dealing with right now, you'll see in the report, is two thousand nineteen scores. Why are we referring to two thousand nineteen scores? Because our state superintendent has said that our S B A scores shouldn't be used for the last two years, number one. During COVID, we didn't even give the test. Last year, we gave the test. The very first trimester students were back from COVID. And the superintendent of public instruction, that's who I'm referring to, not Mr. Ellis, I'm referring to Mr. Reichdahl. Superintendent of Public Instruction for the state said, don't use those scores. And then you'll see information from the state superintendent later in the year when we give it to our sophomores, who is, who usually give that to. And talks about all the improvement that we've seen from districts. What improvement is he referring to? He's referring to the improvement between the first tests right out of COVID and seven, six months of schooling. Back in a post-COVID environment where students have had six months of schooling and the improvement from beginning of the year to end of year. So why I'm frustrated is before COVID, our numbers actually. Though there's always room for improvement, our numbers are actually pretty good when you compare them with the state. The diagrams that you see on our school improvement plan are the evidence of that. They're not great, there's room for improvement, but they're not terrible either when you compare them to the rest of the state. The darkened rectangle is where we sit compared to the rest of the schools in the state. There are areas of improvement, obviously. When we see math scores, pre-COVID, you saw us at about thirty-six percent proficient. Sounds terrible, sounds like we're failing. Well, wait a second, look at the, look at the graphs, look at the information that's presented. And you'll see that the entire state of Washington is very, very low. We are not talking about, we're not, we're not far off the measurement from every other school in the state. And when you compare us to the valley, we're even higher on that spectrum than we are according to the state. E L A is the same thing. When you look at the E L A data pre-COVID, we were about seventy-three percent proficient. COVID happened, and now you're looking at page. Nine. So even though our state superintendent said, don't look at this data, don't use this data, what did we do? We included that data on the state report card. And that data shows the reality of where we're at post-COVID. Our E L A proficiency is at forty-one point two percent. Forty-one point two percent. Our math is at sixteen point six percent. Okay, now that is also. Average with what the state, what happened throughout the state, at least a twenty percent drop in scores and S B A scores. The only one that didn't drop actually was science, that stayed relatively the same at about thirty-two percent. As we go through this. I guess I should back up, I want to point out one other thing, and that's our E L progress, so if we're on page seven. Page seven, our E L progress. Is on the lower end of the state, meaning we're not progressing our kids through that program and they're not exiting the E L D. Which is a significant reason why Mr. Larez and I have worked. Pretty, I'll say tirelessly, we've, we've been trying to implement a number of things at the high school level and at all levels. To try and improve this, this score and this uh, this progress.
What is uh?
Uh, that is the uh, English language learners, uh, so they're, they qualify in a ranking system based on the, on how they. Um, do perform on tests uh, for their language acquisition and um, it goes from one, two, three, and four. And you know, obviously we want to improve students through that, so ones we want to improve the twos, when they're fours, then they can exit out of the program. Um, here at the high school, we've done a number of different things and you'll see evidence of this later in the, in uh, when we refer to the slides. I apologize, maybe it should be up there, I think it's in the slide somewhere. We will also post, post these on our high school website, so.
Do we have slides from this on there?
Are they in the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The meat of an S I P, you know, really when we talk about this, this is the state of our affairs, this is the state of where we're at, but really the meat of an S I P is what are you gonna do about it? And how are we going to bridge those gaps? We've been, we've been working on this, the plan itself, the school improvement plan really shouldn't change drastically year to year. We do modify our goals, the, I think all of our goals actually um, are the same in our school improvement plan. With modification, so you will always see graduation goals on the high school, school improvement plan. You will always see a freshman failure rate goal, you will always see E L A and math goals on our school improvement plan, always. And um, you'll always see an avid goal on our, on our school improvement plan. Those will always be here. What we've done is we've adjusted those given the data that we have available to us. Um, goal number one, they've also changed, if, if nobody else talked about this previously, they also changed smart goals to smart eagles. Did we talk about that last time I happened to be gone? Uh, to reflect, I don't even, I can't even remember, it's in here somewhere, but the I, that, he is equity, what's the I? Inclusive, inclusivity, right? Inclusion and equity, um, and so now there's something else to track there, hey, you know, how inclusive are we being? How are we including all of our students instead of just subgroups of students in the same conversation? And equity uh, uh, right along the same lines there.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The S M A are.
That's the smart goals, uh, those have been used for years and I, I, I'm gonna try to remember here, uh, oh, let's see, measurable.
Specific.
So specific, measurable, accurate. See, I need to look at my report, um.
Relevant.
Relevant, there we go, and timely, and timely, so yes, I have to look at my forms to get that. Yeah, it's, it's on page nine, it's on page nine. Of my report, sorry, down at the bottom of page nine, it says smarty goals. Specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, time-bound, inclusive, and equitable. Goal number one, Prosser High School is our graduation rate. We have seen drastic, I believe drastic improvement in our graduation rate, and I expect that to continue to go up. Uh, we adjusted our goal, we were at eighty-five percent, we've adjusted that to ninety percent, uh, because we feel like that is actually attainable. Um, we do still have, there are a number of things that influence that. Uh, a lot of the, the things in this school improvement plan also influenced that, so you'll see on our action items and our activities that they are. Uh, you know, lockstep with other goals because they work so closely together. For example, when we talk about graduation rate. We also talk about freshman failure, failure rates, we also talk about identifying students early. Uh, because that graduation rate is affected by our freshmen coming through the system, and if they. Lose credits at their very beginning of their, their high school career, they're far less likely to graduate, so we want all of those to improve. Um, but we did raise the, raise the graduation rate, we hope to continue to work on. Uh, a number of things, I picked up our pamphlet from surveys, and we've lost it already. Picked up our pamphlet from surveys uh, that will go into our school improvement, our strategic planning. Uh, the overview of, of our data, and one of the things in here talks about M T S S. Yes, ma'am. Okay, perfect, I'm on page ten. Back up. Back up, back up, back up. Thank you, I'm on page ten, uh, but uh. On our systems, systems page of this, uh, talks about areas of growth uh, that people have. You know, a desire for us to improve, and one of those is a multi-tiered system of interventions. We agree, we're all on the same page, that's one of the things that we are working on. Um, we have been working on it for years, but we will continue to try and develop that, and that has kind of morphed a little bit. Um, into a multi, it's multi-tier, multi-agency when we talk about canceling. We not only talk about educational systems, but we talk about uh, social emotional learning as well, and there's different sides to that pyramid. Uh, the pyramid of interventions, the multi-tiered system of interventions is. It's the strategies that I can reach all students and that are meant to, and designed for all students at the base level, everybody gets. And then as you work your way up towards the top, less and less students get those because it's more focused and targeted interventions. And we found that we didn't have a lot of, um, a lot of systems in place that were. Um, specifically designed and targeted for those kids, and we have been developing that, we will continue to develop that. Um, smart goal number two, are there questions on smart goal number one, graduation rate?
And I think your pages are off, so I actually think page, I, I think it shows page eleven on.
Okay.
It's off for some reason, so page eleven is actually your first goal, so I think you're on your second.
Now we're there. Now we're to freshmen um, on track to graduate. I, I do need to clarify this one and, and qualify this. The state's definition of on track to graduate is that every, is that a student passed every single class they took in their freshman year. Every single one. In our school district and in our system, we are on a trimester system, meaning. You have a lot more opportunity, you have a little bit more wiggle room than you normally would, that was one of the reasons why. We previously went to the, the trimester system. So students have the opportunity to achieve thirty and, and gain thirty credits in our system. You only need twenty-six to graduate. In our current state and the COVID. Uh, state, post-COVID state, there are also a number of things that you can do that, that can bring you all the way down to. Twenty-four or even twenty to graduate, depending on the circumstances surrounding each student. Bottom line is, in our district, we require twenty-six credits to graduate, so we're already allowing four credits. Or eight classes that a student can fail and still graduate. Because we know that they struggle and we know we want to give them opportunities to gain those credits to meet the graduation requirement. So here we are as freshmen, knowing that it's a challenge coming in, and the state says you can't fail anything. And you're off track. That number has decreased for us in post-COVID world. So post-COVID, we were at sixty-four percent, sixty-four percent of our students were on track to graduate. Right now, our current state, uh, as of last year, dropped like every district across the state to forty-two percent. So for only forty-two percent of our students made it through all of their classes. And uh, forty-two percent of our freshmen made it through all their classes without failing one. The activities for that are the same as our graduation. Because a multi-tiered system will catch those students and provide them with targeted instruction and targeted. Uh, goals to continue to help them succeed in class. Continue supportive credit recovery, how can we recover that credit for a student if they fail? Giving them opportunities to, to get that credit back, and early identification system. Uh, our counseling team has been working on that and putting a little bit more pressure on them to get that done. And then one of the big things, and I saved this one till this discussion, but there's the development of graduation pathways, and that'll come up a little bit later as well. Um, graduation pathways, i- it's really hard. To talk about smart goal number four and smart, smart goal number five for me. And I'm gonna bring it back up when we talk about, I'll, I'll bring graduation pathways back up. As I move through this, goal number three, are we, are you guys okay if I moved to goal number three?
Actually, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
So by the state's definition, if they fail one class as a freshman, are you on the sixty percent side?
If they fail one class, so one class means that they are no longer on track to graduate. So this number, the number that I'm telling you, actually, in the goal, I rewrote the goal this year, usually it says. Uh, I can't remember exactly how I wrote it last year, I put ten percent increase in the number of ninth graders that are on track to graduate. Um, what you'll see on the report card, it's, it lists the number forty-two, forty-two percent is, is the number that's on track.
Okay, so that puts them on the sixty.
Correct, correct, so fifty-eight percent of our students failed at least one.
Do you have any numbers on, how many, one class, two classes, three classes, do you have that?
We do, I don't have that here.
Oh, okay.
But yes, we do have all of that.
So it's, it's more than likely, though, it's maybe one class or in a smaller amount of two, and it's, it's not a.
In this case, we're talking about students.
Yeah.
So it's not the number of classes that they failed, if they failed just one, they're, they're part of that fifty-eight percent that, that is off track.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Goal number three, average daily attendance increased to eighty-five, we actually increased this one this year because um. We struggled at the start of the year, we struggled throughout the year, our numbers have slowly been creeping up. Um, and, and getting much better, we're, we're happy with our attendance, we're happy with the things that we've done to try and increase that. And those numbers are progressively going up, so we, we increased that one this year. Um, a part of that is bringing, you know, September Awareness Month, student recognition, we're still working on a lot of these things. And uh, we created what's called a student success team this year, uh, that is. Uh, teachers that have a particular student that are concerned about a student, there's a form that they fill out, they give that to our, our counseling team. Our counseling team then reaches out to all the other students, our, all the other teachers that have that same student. We convene a meeting, we talk about what uh, possibilities we have to bring that student back in, if we need to call parents and bring them into that meeting, we do. And it, it's created a collaborative team effort to try and target particular students. Uh, and it has been a successful thing for us so far, we've only had a few of those meetings, but uh, we, we like the direction that that is taking us. Smart eagle number four, you guys ready for that one? Smart goal number four, eighty percent of our eleventh grade students will achieve high school graduation cut scores in E L A. This is why I struggle with this one. This is, I'm complaining a lot, I know, I'm sorry. This is why I struggle with this. I just talked about the, the S B A C, the, the state test. That state test is only, and what this is based off of, that state test is only one of nine graduation pathways. Used to be that you, hey, you need to pass this test or you're not gonna graduate. We have nine different pathways now that students can go in order to meet, meet the graduation pathway. So even if they aren't proficient in this test, they can take. Two credits and C T, I actually have it right here, let me look at it so I can get it all right for you. Go through these, graduation pathways. Armed service aptitude test, that's the ASFAB test, which is available to all students to take. Number two, career and techni- technical education sequence, this is one of the reasons why Mr. Follett and I have really tried to increase our C T E offerings. If you take two credits in the same sequence, that's your pathway to graduate. Number three. A L E, C T E sequence is an alternate learning experience. Number four, combination of graduation pathways, you can choose, you can pick and choose different things, different ways to meet that between test scores and. And others, other areas. Number five, college admission exam scores for E L A, so if I take the S A T and pass the S A T. I'm already qualified to graduate. Dual credit courses for E L A, last year we, and I, that's another goal in here, we increased. Last year, we had about seventy percent of our students take a dual credit course. Dual credit not only gives them college courses and uh, helps them, you know. Plan ahead into their future, but it also gives them an opportunity to get a graduation pathway. Dual credit exam scores for E L A and math, um, including advanced placement. And then number eight on here is statewide assessments, that's the S, S B A C that we're talking about. And number nine, transition courses for E L A or math, which is part of um. Part of master planning, our master scheduling. So I have struggles because here we are asking our students to take this in all seriousness. Do the very best you can. But if you don't pass it, you still have eight other ways to graduate. What do you think kids are gonna do? Some of them will take it very seriously and do their very best, others will. Some of them will take it very seriously and do their very best. Others will not. Which is why we have a broad, more, a more broad spectrum and more broad avenue for kids to graduate. Because not all kids take this test seriously. I hope that makes sense.
But there are, there also are kids that do take it very seriously.
There are.
Very hard.
There are.
Successful in school, but not pass the test.
Absolutely.
The reason pathways exist. They have gifts and talents that just don't show up in that test.
Absolutely.
And they can graduate and go on and be very successful. That's why they're.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a very good point. All that to to say, I don't, we don't want to diminish this. We still would love to see our numbers grow back up to eighty. I believe our numbers are going to be drastically different this year than they were last year. Uh, this year, we're back to normal testing. We will test our sophomores at the very end of the year after now two full years of of learning in in a building setting, uh, in-person setting. I think we're gonna see huge gains compared with the the COVID number. And I'm curious to compare that with the pre-COVID number and see, have we regained what we lost from COVID? Eighty percent is what's is what's on there. And that really matches our our district goals. We wanted to be at eighty-five percent by or eighty percent by two thousand twenty-five is really what that is. Um, and math was the same way. We wanted to be at seventy-five percent by two thousand twenty-five. So for our long-term planning. One of the things, and I know I'm talking a lot, I apologize to everybody here, but one of the things that we realized, I I did a lot of talking with Deanna and a lot of kicking and screaming um, to try and remove a test from uh, from our school improvement plan, the I-ready test. And we did that. She, you know, she, I don't know how, why she agreed or how she agreed, but now my foot is in my mouth.
Option.
Now my foot, I'm gonna put my foot in my mouth in this one and say that I was wrong. In this regard, we we need to find another uh, growth monitoring system. I still maintain that I-ready is not the proper platform for high school students. Students do not do well on that test because it's, they have little chipmunks or squirrels talking on the screen. It's very, it's geared towards a younger age. And our students absolutely did not. They felt um, offended that we didn't give them a test like that. So now, what we did, what we did, we took the uh, SBACK. There's different parts of the SBACK test. There's the the big test that you take at the end of your sophomore year and every year after that to try and and get your pathway. There's also what's called SBA interim testing and SBA interim focused testing. So you can break that test down by parts. So we've included that and that's what we wanted to go to, but we've learned some things this year. Bottom line is this, we're still gonna try to incorporate the SBA interim testing into uh, our students' learning because they're gonna see that on the SBA test. But we're going to try and look for other avenues to, excuse me, other avenues and other products to monitor our students with. Uh, there, there are products out there that we can monitor that are more appropriate for a high school age student. Um, that will help us much like the I-ready. And I hope that that's something that you gleaned from their reports, from the our our elementary reports. It's good information because you get to see growth. It's always positive to see growth. We may not be, we may not be proficient in our achievement scores, but we're seeing all this growth. We don't have that right now. Because even when we gave the I-ready, we, kids hated it. They wouldn't, they wouldn't do it. And so now we need to find something that kids will do that isn't so offensive to them. And I think that that it's out there. We just need to find it. And we have examples. So uh, we're gonna start working with some of those these things. Yeah.
These nine pathways you have for graduation.
Yeah.
Are all of them uh, also workable for kids who that want to go into college or?
They are, yes. Every single one of these is, uh, it's college and career. Um, geared geared towards college and career. Some of them, I mean, it depends on what you want to go into college for, but uh, all of our, uh, you know, when you look at the state and and what the graduation requirements are, they list, you know, foreign language. You don't necessarily have to have two years of foreign language, even though it's on there. You don't necessarily have to have two years of art, even though it's on there. So it depends on what you want to go to. Um, if a student wants to go into medical field, they work with their counselors and they might want to take statistics because that will help them in the medical field as opposed to a pre-calculus course. Um, you know, so we have to make those adjustments depending on what what avenue they want to take. And uh, and that's available to them.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are there any questions on smart eagles five, four and five? Goal number six is English language learners will grow one level. This is what we referred to earlier. We are really working hard with inclusion, with our sped inclusion and ELD inclusion um, to increase the level of their learning. I've noticed a big change this year in our students because our level three, four, who are the students who are close to testing out and exiting that program, we used to make them take an extra English class. And they were not allowed to take an elective. Well, they didn't do well in that English class because they hated it. And now if they get that extra, we're we're giving them an extra elective and supplementing their learning in other ways. Meaning we're we're providing um, you know, coaching with our teachers to to meet EL EL standards and use EL strategies. We are uh, sometimes uh, we hope to do some co-teaching in the future. Um, but they're included in the general education classroom rather than being separated. And and I think that they appreciate that. Uh, probably more so than we do, but um, they're excited because they get to have another elective and it's another opportunity for them to earn credit that they're interested in. Goal number seven. Eighty percent of students will complete at least one dual credit course and earn college credit by the class of two thousand, by the year, it should say year. Class of two thousand twenty-five is measured by dual credit student percentage. Um, again, this one's tied to our graduation rate as well. We had almost seventy percent, a little over seventy percent, I think. Um, yeah, seventy-two, uh, seventy-two percent of our students took a course last year uh, that was dual credit or AP. And we want to hit eighty percent this year. And we are always looking for opportunities to get more classes on our our dual credit offerings so that students can get college credit even before they leave us. Um, just, you know, kickstart their college careers. We'll continue to do that. We're already starting to plan for next year's master schedule. And uh, last but not least, goal number eight, hundred percent of our teachers will exhibit regular use of avid school-wide strategies. Uh, we went to our avid conference over the summer and um, it was very, very good. We were able to to create goals, focus in on goals. And uh, we have a monitoring system that we have been doing as administrators. We walk through and teachers will have their, it's the WICOR strategies, W I C O R. They're all, you know, writing inquiry organization. Um, what's my C? What am I missing?
Collaborate.
Collaboration, uh, organization and reading. And uh, they'll have that on their board and then they mark which portion, which of those specific uh, categories they're using in their lessons for the day. We're keeping track and then we present that back to our staff and if, when we see that numbers are, you know, low in one particular category, then we supplement that with with some PD coming up. So um, we're we're happy with those goals. We're happy with the progress on our, that we've made in in uh, in avid and and we feel that becoming avid school-wide is an important goal for us. And that's part of it. We didn't, that was actually one of the questions we had as we we created this goal. Do we really want to go a hundred percent? Really? We only have, you know, one, one avid uh, tutorial class per grade. Well, those avid strategies apply to everybody. Uh, and we feel that it's important that every student is is exposed to those strategies because they work. And so, yeah, we want a hundred percent of our students exhibiting those regularly. And um, and we feel that we're on our way to that. That's our school improvement plan. I know that you will probably have questions as we, as you, that sinks in, but uh, if you have any questions right now, I'd be happy to try and answer.
Abid advancement via individual.
Individual determination. Yep.
Yep.
Why is it important for students to have a college credit?
I think that uh, I want them to be able to experience college. I want them to, if they want to go to college, a lot of times we have, we have so many students who are first generation college students who may not think they can do it. And so just to get a college credit under their belts and realize, I just earned an English credit from Eastern Washington University here at high school. I I can probably do this. If that's, if that's what they want to do. We're not forcing anybody into it, but I think a lot of kids don't go to college or don't explore things simply because they don't think that they can. And so by offering this, they not only get high school credit, but they also have the opportunity to get, even if a student doesn't get college credit, they don't do well enough to get a college credit. They can still pass the class and get high school credit for it. So it's an important, it's an important bridge for us, I think, and for them.
We look at all these school improvement programs or uh, plans. You know, we see where we need to make improvements and stuff like that. So one of the things that we look at is the ELA and math and then they're low, kind of across the board. But I think you you mentioned something, uh, so my question would be is, we have nine pathways to graduate high school, but we're measuring one pathway. Is it in my, in my read, is that?
On the state report card, the state report card gives you information on one of those.
Okay. Is there a way, and maybe we do this, but is there a way to combine the success of all nine pathways into a I guess a a report card for Prosser School District?
And create our own report card?
Basically.
I think what you're, what I, my understanding of what you just asked is that we create a summary of how our school improvements went and report back on those school improvement plans with the data that is created from this year. Am I wrong?
I don't know. I mean, it's it's really hard to back.
It sounds to me like you're asking, like, if there's nine pathways and we're graduating eighty-five percent of our kids, how how's that happening? Like?
How many of them graduated with each pathway?
Some kids might be getting accepted to college university. Some kids passed the test. Some kids took the ASVAB. There's those pathways. How many of our?
We can definitely do that.
Graduating in that, meeting that requirement, at least, that's the state assess, that's how they show they've met the state assessment requirement, even if they didn't pass the assessment. That's really all that, that's what that is about. There's pathways and the pathways.
State wants to show you, correct. The state wants to show you achievement data. The state wants to show you how well our students are achieving in two core areas, math and English. What we're talking about, and then we we want to also tag in their graduation. And it's always, it is very difficult. It's hard to look at it and say, how in the heck do you have ninety or even ninety? I mean, some schools will have a ninety-eight percent graduation rate. How do you have a ninety-eight percent graduation rate when your proficiency level is at thirty percent? How is that even possible? We're graduating students that aren't ready for the world. That's not entirely true. Because that just means that they didn't pass the that test.
And I think that's my point.
Yes.
Anybody outside this community or inside the community goes to SBA and they see that, or they look at some of this data, they're like, man, it's a train wreck.
Yeah, or it's a diploma mill. There, we're just finding ways to graduate kids.
We're cutting.
Hmm, yeah.
You know, we're I'm gonna bash an organ a little bit. We're gonna do what Oregon did and got some of the uh, requirements, right? Um, so I guess my question is, is, and I don't know how we do this. So kind of like what Deanna said, is that we have these different pathways. Not every kid is designing it. You know?
We, yeah. We can do that. We can create, I can create a summary of information for you that shows you exactly which pathway every single student that graduates from Prosser High School, which pathway they used. I can get that to you. Yes.
Career and college and, you know, the services.
Any of, any of those nine, because we have to report that. We we have, we already have to report that. So we just need to, we would just gather that, put it into a table for you or a a chart and that way you could see it. We can do that.
Great discussion.
I know, years ago, um, years ago, when I was working in the district office, we did uh, we did postcards. And we sent them out and it was like, uh, we had a test group and it was like every five years, we sent postcards and did that checkup to see, you know, where people were at. And did you graduate from college or where you were at in your career? And we get those postcards back and and it was really interesting to see, to follow up on how people had had done five years after graduation, ten years after graduation, fifteen years after graduation. And that was really good information that came into the district. We can get the information for kids that go to college to see if they persist through the National Clearinghouse. We can, we can get that information, but we don't get information for kids who chose a different path. But we just, uh,
Excuse me.
We, uh, a senior classroom just followed them after high school graduation. That's interesting. Yeah.
Why, why do you have so many pathways?
Those are state designated. We don't create those on our own. Those are, that's what the state has allowed us to do. Any other questions?
Good, good report. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Yes.
It's a two-part question.
Yes.
They asked the other principals kind of the same. So if you could add something to high school tomorrow or take away something from high school tomorrow, if you, if you want.
Um, hmm. I'll be honest with you. I don't know that we would take away anything. I think we're finally moving back in our, in a good direction. I think our kids are in a uh, on a uphill climb with their, their social emotional um, aspects. We've brought back a number of cultural pieces to our building that has really helped with our assemblies and uh, you know, right now we have Mary Mustang Week and dress-ups and we've been doing that a little bit more. I think we're, I don't think I take away anything. Uh, I think you guys hit right on the head. The thing that I would add, which is the social emotional help and counseling help. Um, because our counselors, they're not qualified to give that to students. And and there is still a very, very large need for that. Uh, that's the one area I would, I would really lean on. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, if you want to show your, um.
I don't care. I was just gonna say, it's gonna be a little bit of a drastic change because we're going from the high school down to my little K two school. So I only have three goals. Um, if you want to put it up, you can. It's, it doesn't matter to me. Um, the first couple of pages are just kind of our leadership team. Um, going on to the next page, these are from the OSPI uh, report card. And this is our data from last year. Right now, um, it says on here, three seventy-nine from last year, we are sitting at about four hundred kids. So that's exciting, a good increase. And then um, we'll be adding that transitional kinder class too in, so that also increase our numbers. So I give the principals a little bit of grief because I say I'm doing my part in increasing my enrollment. So we gotta, we gotta hold them. Um, when you go and you look at the I-ready data, so I know Kevin kind of mentioned this too. We should have page numbers on here, but guess I'm on, oh, one, two, three, four. How about page four? Um, at the K two level, we don't have SBA data. That doesn't start until third grade. And so really, our big measuring piece that we have overall diagnosed, diagnostic-wise is um, from I-ready that we can look at the trends through over the years. Uh, we have now our, we have our ARC data that we're able to look at kind of in building, but again, that's just um, just from September on now. So we'll be able to pull that into this kind of report too. Unfortunately, I-ready doesn't break apart the data like the SBA does in demographics. Um, so when you look at this, we can pull it apart by teacher. And then we can look at it, but it's all like kind of hand done with that. So when we do like data dives and look into these as a building, we kind of, we can look at some of those factors, but kind of the big picture of it, this is just our big picture of the whole building. So you can look at, um, I know it got brought up with the other elementaries, but you kind of see that in the fall, our scores, um, are low. And then in the spring, we make a big jump. And then I feel a bit like in the fall, we go backwards. So that look, that shows in the twenty twenty-one fall data and again, in the twenty twenty-two fall data, we're back down to um, twelve percent of students at grade level. So a lot of our questions have been um, with our leadership team and with our building is how do we sustain those numbers and keep those numbers to um, to keep those numbers up so that we're not dipping back down and then moving back up every year, so that we've had a lot of conversation about that.
Well, we have a lot of conversation about, in first grade, they're measured on first grade standards.
Yeah.
In second grade, they're measured on secondary standards. So they may leave first grade at grade level for first grade standards because it's gonna be measured on secondary centers. It will be summed it. But we do think that it's more than it should be.
It is more than it should be. Um, if you think about the you know, when you, when you're at the end of first grade, let's say, when you're at the end of first grade, those standards should put you ready for second grade standards. So we shouldn't see that big of a um, big of a drop between. And we should be able, be able to hold some of those students over um, in in that aspect, but so that's um, some conversation that we've been having. There's a report that you can look at um, on here that really talks about uh, or it shows you what it looks like based on, like, right now, like, the expectation of the students right now, not the students at the end. What it looks like based on like right now, like the expectation of the students right now, not the students at the end of the school year. So that one, that report looks better. Um, but, and it's used, you know, for those conversations, but. Not necessarily the overall picture of it. Um, one of the things we talked about in reading is. When you break this out, there's different domains that you can look at. Phonics and vocabulary tend to be our lowest domain for the last, um, few years. Uh, the phonics work has been great with ARC. Uh, we, it has systematic phonics in it. The, the teachers are doing like every day, they're doing some type of quick little lesson on, um. Some piece, it, it kind of depends per grade level. I was in a classroom and they were working on chunk words. The students were able to manipulate those chunk words. And so all of that work that they've been doing, I think will help to increase our phonics piece on here and that will. Show an impact on our data too. So, so that's been super helpful. We've been seeing great, um, growth out of that. Uh, math. Kind of similar. You can see the data looks very similar to, um, the E L A. Numbers and operations is our lowest domain. Uh, we talked about. Kind of when we gave that brief little summary of, um, implementing number talks and that's just helping to build that number sense with students. So that would be considered in that, in that component of the numbers and operations. Um, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna go to. The goals and kind of look at those real quick. And then we'll jump back to the E L L. Um, so our smartie goal for reading is that, um. By May of twenty twenty-three, fifty percent of K R V students will be on grade level as measured by the iReady assessment. One that we set as a, kind of as a district based on actually our, our iReady data. And our incoming ARC data were very similar in numbers. So I think that we were at like twelve percent in iReady and maybe like fifteen percent in ARC. So we are saying that we're gonna move that up to fifty percent by the end of this school year. We, um, did a. Kind of off topic of this, but today we did a celebration during our site time and, um, we've already increased. From our ARC data, just looking at that piece in the two months that we've been implementing the toolkits, which is like the strategic, um, skilled. Groupings for students in reading, just in those two months, it's already increased about fifteen percent of students are now on grade level. So in two months, we've already gone to fifteen percent more students on grade level. So that's an exciting growth that we celebrated today. So if we keep doing that, we will be right on target. Um, you'll see under, uh, under that goal, the activities are implement ARC with fidelity. That's kind of, that's our huge thing right now. That's what we're spending majority of our time on. Um, grade levels meet and collaborate and do team planning once a week. We spend a lot of time, um, with our instructional coach, with the ARC trainers and, um, it's, it's been a lot of hard, hard work. But I think it's exciting to see that growth that we're seeing and celebrate that success because that's what's gonna keep us going. So. So professional development's on there. Um, equity groupings, that's the. That's that toolkit grouping where we're really focused on grouping students by their skills and then moving them forward based on their skills. And those are continuously changing, which causes a little bit of commotion, but we're trying to work through it. Um, intentionality with iReady, one of the things that the leadership team and the teachers have really talked about. Is especially with our little guys who are just learning to take this iReady test, um. We have to teach them the format of the test. Like, we're not teaching to the test, but we have to teach them how to answer the questions and how to manipulate on the computer. And it's just teaching them, um, to use their skills, but in the way that they're asking the questions. And we, we hope that that will help to increase, increase our scores too. So we, one of their specialist rotations that they go to once a week is on iReady. So they have forty minutes of iReady work in the classroom, um, and that's ran through, through our tech lab with our specialist teachers. So they have exposure to the types of questions that they'll be asked when they come back to the diagnostic test. Any questions on that smartie goal? Okay. So we're going to. Oh, I skipped that part. On the next page, it's, um, offering a monitoring intervention programs. So just really looking at how are we using our reading intervention teachers, um, looking at the inclusionary model, pushing those teachers in. So that they're providing that support for those kiddos. So. Math, um. Our goal is that fifty percent of K R V students will be on grade level as measured by the iReady test. Right now we're at. Eight percent. So how we will do that is, um, we, I'll go to the middle one and then I'll work backwards. So we talked about implementing number talks. That's a big piece that we're really pushing our teachers to do. They've been doing number talks, uh, three days a week. And then they do other, um, math routines the other two days a week. So depending on their grade level, those look a little bit different. Um, for example, first grade is really working on problem solving. So two days a week, they do problem solving routines and they have a problem. And they talk about different strategies and they have the kids visualize how to solve that problem and then talk about strategies and share those out. And then the other three days a week, they do number talks. Um, the same piece is on there for iReady. So like I said, when they do the iReady rotation into their specialist. I think we're doing like two weeks, they do reading and then the next two weeks they do math and then we've just flopped that way. So they're getting that, um, that practice in iReady for the math too. And then the one that's at the top, um, we are currently working towards this. We've, we have. Um, like principal P L C meetings every other Friday and Kevin and Jody and I have been working on. Figuring out how we come back and start evaluating our current, uh, math curriculum. So we've had bridges. Um, we adopted it. I don't even know how many years ago. It's just five, five or six years ago, like a true adoption, but I think we were even using it previously. Um, and we haven't really came back and reviewed that. So I think now is the time that we come back and look at that and what are we? You know, is it getting us where we need to be? Is it moving our students where we want them to be at? So we will be building that team as a district. And, um, coming together so that we can start reviewing that curriculum and then make a decision from there. The last one is, um, the last smartie goal on here is for our E L L students. So eighty percent of K R V students will increase one level and two of the four domains based on the Wida assessment. So those four domains are. Um, listed on this chart. Right here. And. What?
Well, they can't see it.
Oh, yeah. I know. And I don't know. Next year I can put page numbers on here, like on page eight, maybe. Yeah. So what we're hoping in that is that, um, eighty percent of our students are gonna be moving from. Those are the proficiency levels on the left side, one through six. So they're just taking from, um, from one of those levels. Moving out to the next level in listening, reading, speaking or writing. That is our goal. Our E L L teacher is currently, um, this is last year, she kind of started working on, um, implementing a new curriculum. This year she's fully implementing this new curriculum. Um, it's called E L Achieve and Eric's been, um. Providing her with professional development to get that up and going. And she, she's enjoying it. I was in there this weekend. It looks to be pretty effective with the kids are doing a lot of, um, visual pictures of them, a lot of vocabulary work with the students. Um, using sentence frames to help them to build their, to build their language and use complete sentences when answering questions or talking about things. Instead of, you know, just one word thing. So pushing them in that way to help develop their language. So it's been pretty good. Any questions?
Your class.
Um. Twenty, about twenty-two's across.
And you have a pair for each class or one, two classes?
We don't have a pair for every class. Um, what we do is we, I think I have. Um, I have seven general ed pairs. Some of them are paid out of bilingual services. Some of them are, well, not migrant anymore. So bilingual services or, um, title. And so those pairs we use to help with, um, the reading blocks. Yeah, that's where we kind of will. Commit that to.
But having more intervention is healthy anyway.
I mean, yeah, I would always take more interventionist. Yeah. It's, I, you know, um, I was just talking with Marcy Kaufman today. She's my math interventionist and she's one. For our entire school and, um, you know, class size for hers is pretty small. We want to keep her group small. And that will even look different as we start moving toward the, towards this inclusionary model. How is she gonna be pushing in? They have twenty-one classrooms. And so how does she get to twenty-one different classrooms in a day? Um, I will say though that, so that's, that's been tough. And teachers are like, I need my, I need more kids and I need more, you know, I need more support, those kinds of things. And we're working on. On helping teachers to provide some of those interventions in the classroom too. Um.
How many reading interventionists do you have?
I have. One and three quarters. So one of my reading interventionist is a three quarter. But one of the great things that I would love to have next year, when you ask me about what I want next year. Is, um, we just brought in Mercedes Munoz as our, um, bilingual interventionist. She's split between our building and Heights and that's working fine. She's able to serve all three grade levels in reading at K R V. And then she goes to Heights and serves all three grade levels there. It would be great if I could have her or somebody, um. Full-time and she would be able to provide reading intervention services as well as like math to, to those kiddos. So.
So like in a dream scenario, bilingual interventionist, three math interventionist and three reading interventionist.
Yeah.
Or like.
Assistant principal. Um, no, you know, I mean, I can sit up here and say like, this is my list of my dream world, but realistically, like if I could, if I could. If Mercedes could be full-time, if I could have full-time bilingual interventionist and, um. Uh, that would be great.
You think that would be what you could do to have the biggest impact on kids?
Hmm, man, that's a tough one. I don't know.
It's a scenario where you have a hundred dollar bill and you have to make the best use of it.
Well, the, the.
That's tough.
What, I mean, we need more math intervention, but the reality is for kids, if kids aren't. Implementing our, our, our curriculum is really gonna help us really get down to the nitty gritty with kids who really are just, have a dyslexia issue. And, um, and Orton Gillingham is a one-on-one or one-on-two and it's very effective. But you can't see any, it doesn't have to be for long periods of time. It can be for ten to fifteen minutes with one on one or one-on-two kids. But a person is not seeing very many kids, if that's what they're doing, but that's what you have to do to be effective. So, and research, if kids aren't reading, the math isn't gonna matter. Some of those other things just aren't gonna matter. They have to read.
Yeah.
So I, I, I agree the, um, extra support for, for bilingual, for our Spanish intervention for math would be great. But I, I would, for all of our elementaries, more important Gillingham support would be big.
Yeah, and we've, we've seen great growth out of that. Um, even my reading interventionist, which is, which is really the purpose of a reading interventionist is that. They are, you know, to be the, um. What am I trying to say? Um.
Is the last stop before special education.
Yeah.
Like that, like when we're providing Orton Gillingham intervention and whether reading intervention is, if that isn't working, and that is. Strong specially designed instruction for special education students too, because we're also using in special education, but.
My word that I forgot was expert. So our reading interventionists are, you know, we, we look at them as the experts in the building for reading intervention. So it's been nice to listen to them kind of collaborate about that because they've been able to go in and they're, they're teaching the toolkits. Um, through ARC, but then they'll throw in some of that Orton Gillingham stuff too. And it's a lot of like sounds and. Tapping things out and having kids glide their words and stuff. So, so it's been cool to listen to them use the toolkits and the ARC stuff. But able to pull in those other tools that they have in their tool belt to help those kiddos. So. Yeah.
Can I just piggyback off the thought of what you're asking? Um, I know the timing is difficult with these plans because we're getting them in December for this current year. But for budget purposes, you know, in two months, I'm gonna start building out the budget for next year. So that's, I think it's a great question because really I would need that information from you guys, like for the next year. By March, you know, March to May timeframe. So if you need another position or if we need to be like. Not trying to, not trying to make your work like, hey, we need the next set already. Um, but kind of think about those questions, um, and see, you know, so that we can collaborate here in a couple of months. Of course, with the direction of the board and, but to make those impacts next year, because now if you're going. You know, if you need to meet these goals, but you don't have the resource to do it, you're just setting yourself up, yourself up for failure. We have to make sure we have the resources available to meet those goals. So if you have a kind of an idea of where you think you'll be next year. Or what resources you need to be successful, I'm more than happy to help kind of facilitate like the financial end of the thing, you know, put money against.
We're more than happy to send you our wishlist.
I know, do it. Somewhere and knowing and then prioritizing. Well, this is the most important, we'll have to make this cut over here, but this is more important in.
You're gonna have like seventy-five emails.
Yeah. Asking for it.
You get a teacher, you get a teacher, you get a vice principal, you get a prince.
Great.
We do have to prioritize and things like this where you can put a measurement behind. I think it's important, the community I'm sure would love to see if we're putting re, financial resources in something, then we can see an outcome of it too. I mean, I think it's great. I love the.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got, um. I've got two questions. Um, and I've asked it, well, I, this is a new one. So ARC is new. And not only you, but Jody and, and Kevin have both said that, that it's performing very well. Um, is there a way to do a mid-year? Um, like assessment, like, like you were saying that they've gone up fifteen percent in just a couple of months?
Yeah.
Is there a way that, um. That we can look at the way ARC is performing comparative to what we've seen in years past? That the curriculum is helping you achieve some of your, your goals that, that you set and some of the direction for your school. Is there a way just to get an update on how well that's working like mid-year, like a half year, you know, mid-year in? I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, so I, so iReady, um, is a, like, it's kind of a diagnostic overall picture. So it's looking at the students. Um, when we give them the diagnostic, it tests them in within the standards of their grade level. And then that moves up or down so that they, you know, if they're excelling, then it could take them up to second grade or third grader on. Um, and that one is not tied to ARC. So it's, it's, it's more based on the standards. ARC has, ARC has their, yeah, so what I was talking about was their, the toolkits and that's looking at students' individual reading levels. So looking at the students' individual reading levels and then what we do is they create power goals based on those reading levels. And those power goals are what's gonna move them forward in, in, as they progress. So they have to develop this, this and this and this skill before they're ready to move on to that next level. In that level, then they have different skills that they work through.
But it's important. I have some reporting you can use that's.
It has.
All building data that shows where they started, where they are.
Yeah.
That would be.
But it's, but it's based on the student's individual reading level. It's not, and it's not necessarily a big picture. Of the reading achievement overall. But yeah, there is.
More about growth than achievement.
Yeah.
Her data is reflected at the third grade level when they do state testing. So that's what's tricky too. We have ARC, a program, and then we have iReady. That's not connected to anything that the state requires. But we have S back when they get into third grade. And so K R Vs, that was that whole discussion around neighborhood schools that the board had once upon a time. And so K R Vs, that was that whole discussion around neighborhood schools that the board had once upon a time. That like with strand, you're able to say, all right, they're testing at third. Um, and kind of look at how they're progressing within that. Her data shows up at Jody's building. And so that's kind of, that's kind of odd to assess too, because there's gaps and transitions too. So they're passing from. What's the information? Like we talked about looping before, same kids, same teachers or information. You know, data sets within buildings, those transitions. So they work hard together. But it's, it's not as clean as that. And then with the new program, you're talking about program eval. You, you know, there are a couple of different conversations there. It's program evals around merit and worth. So you're looking at the program performing and then really what's the value to broader stakeholders? Um, or what you paid for the program and things like this. But with a new program, you're really looking at fidelity of implementation. So is everybody doing the same thing? Right? Is anybody deviating from that? Because those were, will actually alter the outcomes you see later. So teacher A deviated from it and that's why they have better or worse scores. Right? And so making sure that everybody is doing the same thing consistently.
So one of the things that we could look at that, um, might be helpful is I talked about the different domains within iReady. So like knowing that phonics has been one of our, our lower areas. We could look at last year's phonics domains for fall, mid-year, end year. And then the same kind of piece for this year. And that would be, that would show, so, I mean, a little bit of the effect of, of ARC. It's different, but.
But yeah, that is a good.
We could look at something like that and that could show the effect of it. But Matt's right. A lot of, a lot of the work right now has really just been like implementing ARC with fidelity. Like we're just trying our best. There's a lot to it and a lot of pieces that eventually we're going to have to make some choices on what do we keep, what do we get rid of based on, you know, the needs of the students. So.
So they talk about leading lagging indicators. And so your leading indicators will be like walkthroughs. Is everybody teaching the same thing? You know, with the ARC curriculum. And then the lagging indicators, you'll see an increase in test scores and things like that. But how far is the leg on that? It's like the, um, whole principle that a doctor says, take an aspirin and call me in the morning. Right? He doesn't say, take an aspirin, then in five minutes, take another aspirin, then take another aspirin, take another. Right? And so there's, there's some leg time between that, that we see outcomes. So.
ARC is probably the most real time that we have.
Yeah.
To student reading levels.
Yeah.
We used, we used to do that. There, um, Scotty Hunt is a leader, was really wanting to, he was always asking for data and to see data and to see performance results. Um, you know, and so that, that's another one. We, we haven't really done any data nights or poll. You know, um, so we used to do these and the work was ongoing. We used to have multiple principal reports. We've kind of trailed off from that, but, um, it's all in kind of what the board wants to see and the conversations that they want to have. If it's around performance academically, right? And we can start to pull that and start to present that. So you guys have a really clear picture of like, here's what kids are doing in their class. Here's how they're doing.
We have a mid-year iReady window that will be opening in January. So the students will be retaking iReady for a mid-year check-in um, for both reading and math. And then like for ARC, it's just ongoing. It's constant when they're being reassessed and moved.
Thank you.
Any other questions? There's some pieces of spelling, yeah, embedded into it. A lot of it, um, is, is, um, based around like the chunks that they're working on or something like that in the classroom. So, yeah. Yeah. There's one, one other piece I wanted to share with you guys. Um, I didn't have it in here, but, um, we have avid goals. One of our big avid goals is increasing our parent, um, involvement in parent nights. And so I know we had the reptile man that was scheduled that we had to cancel because of weather. So we'll hopefully be able to reschedule him, um, soon. And we had, Matt couldn't talk about it, but the second grade Christmas concert last night, which was just amazing. And it was so fun to see all those kids together. And we had half of the O P H S, um, gym and it was packed. Plus there was like lots of people standing. So, um, that was fun. We're hoping Kevin and I are working together to, um, see if we can bring in, um, Ruth Parker, who is connected to MECC and does number talks. And so she would come in and do a community night based around number talks. So that's what we're, Kevin and I are working on that right now. So. We're excited for it. Yeah, no problem.
Sorry. Are you hearing anything about the new, we talk a lot about ARC, the new reading curriculum, but we also provided impact. I think we're implementing the new music curriculum and art, K through five. So how is that?
Yeah. I, I haven't like, um, really sat down to talk with Sue about like how students are doing in it. But I was in there doing observations and they were doing like this cute little, they had these scarves that they were like doing scarve movements to the beat. And it was really fun to be in there. So, and she, she has said that she loves it and that she's really enjoying teaching it. Um, it was cool. They had like, uh, video that they could watch. And then there was music playing and they had scarves and just a lot of different means of, I don't know, accessing that music. So.
The three, they're specialists. So they're doing, all of them are doing music and art. They're not just staying, they're not. Mrs. Bray isn't just doing music. She's, you know, they're trying to incorporate different things. Mrs. Stevens is doing music and art. Um, and I'm, they were ever at the, my office a couple of weeks ago and they're just so happy and they're collaborating and they're working together and their kids are getting to do new things. Last night at the high school band concert, they got T U news, there was quite a few new instruments. Um, so there's been, um, I, I think it's been a given a really good shot in the arm and the fact that they're working together. Um, I was actually in, um, doing an observation today and happened to be one of the music teachers with one of the principals and, um, they're working on. Doing what Jesse's talking about, bringing back those family nights and having wins the opportunity for the kids to perform and show what they know and are able to do. They're, they all, we implemented a new, like they get to do, you know, recorders, which we weren't really doing consistently. Now we're doing recorder, hot cross buns. That's like.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, the kids are just loving it and Eric purchased recorders for all our migrant students. So they get to have them. His kids can buy them to take them home, but they have to have the money to buy them. So. Purchase some. And I didn't know that. Manny told me that when I was in there today. So. I think it's given them a real shot in the arm. They're pretty excited.
They had plates and they were doing like different dance movements to the plates and then clapping them together. And yeah, it was fun dancing around them.
But there's. Seven, sixty, some new freshman, sixth grade band members. They're getting music exposure in elementary and they're rolling up and wanting to be in band and Dan's doing a great job with that. So he draws them in. So.
Maybe this spring we could get a summary from the.
Oh, I think we sure could do that. Yep.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the next thing on our discussion list is, uh, the bargaining negotiation.
Yeah. So we've been in bargain, bargaining with a number of different unions. Um, there's a newly formed athletic coaches union. Uh, we're bargaining with building secretaries. And then, um, they're, the directors, they aren't necessarily a, uh, union per se. They're more of a group. And so, um, we are looking at bringing that, the recommendations forward to the board. Um, I've sent some information on to the board, but this is more, instead of kind of a discussion item, just a information item. Um, to say that these are coming on their way and you can expect to, to see them on the agenda at an upcoming meeting. If there's any feedback, um, on those, uh, please feel free to connect with me and, uh, express your opinion or concern, um, before we get to that point. So that's all I had.
All right. Well, that then leads us to reports. And because technically we don't have a student board member yet. Sorry. Amy, you're up.
And so I've got enrollment, um, attached there. And then hopefully I'm planning on the next one. I know we're doing a special meeting next week. Got that one for sure. By the twenty eighth, I'll have your monthly reports and then fiscal year report for you as well. Also be bringing back the G S A affinity contracts. So you'll see the, um, see that on the next board meeting. And, um, I have the card implementation meeting with the bank on Friday. So, and that's still moving forward. We'll find out what the next steps are from then and then.
Cool. Deanna.
Um, I have two things. Uh, when I was able to attend, um, band concerts last night, went to the middle school, high school concert. I had to see most of the middle school and then I went and went up to the high school to, the old high school to see the Keenburg concert. So I didn't get to see the highest actual high school band performance, but I heard they were amazing. Um, so that was really exciting and great to see so many people there. Mister Norris had tried to block off some space because the kids would have to trade spots and he had to like, because there was just too many people standing. So it was, it was great to have all of those people. Like he said, it was a good problem to have. So. If you see that, any Sue or Dan, if you were able to go, it was, it was great. My second thing is Matt asked me to share the overview of the survey data. I gave out copies to everybody. Um, Matt has some extra copies and there were some back there. So we had survey data and, and, um, we spent some time disaggregating it. They, they should have them. I made, I think one little.
Everybody's got one right?
All right.
Yeah. They want one where we're near.
There's some more back there. I put extras back there. Um, we, there's lots of information in the survey data and lots of information, the focus group data. We try to keep it, um, I, I need to share my screen, Ashley. Can you allow me to share my screen? That you're disabled. Um, so. Uh, so I just needed a little PowerPoint to share this information with you. Let's take a second. Um. So the, this came from focus groups as well as the parent, community, staff and student surveys that were sent out. And we tried to stick to big themes. So for a strategic plan, we'll need to pick, you know, a few areas to work on. Um, there is more data. We can share that with you. It's a lot. We're happy to share that with you. But these are some of the areas that, um, that came up in, in our five categories. So we have five categories that we, we, um, asked questions within. One of those areas was leadership. Uh, so some of the questions were designed to gather information on leadership. The areas of strength that were indicated was support for student learning and emotional health. And support for staff professional growth came out as strengths in leadership. The areas of growth were clear district priority goals, um, communication, and you'll see communicate, communication came up a lot. Um, district and board transparency, expanding community partnerships and more support for student mental health. So I think when you look at your Arabs and streets, the part from ourselves, what they're saying is the leaders in the buildings try to do their best to support students in emotional health, but we need more support for mental health. Okay. So that was under leadership. Second category, we asked questions under where is, was instruction. And, um, in instruction, one of the strengths that was listed was communication. Additional help is available if needed, um, and students are prepared for college and career. That came from parents and staff. Ironically, um, from community, so they said that students were not prepared for college and career. Um, and you'll see this kind of happen throughout the survey. There are several areas where parents and, and staff or parents and students and staff report something is the area of strength that the community is reporting is an area of weakness. So whether we would have to examine further, is it truly an error of weakness or are we doing a bad job of communicating what we're doing? Okay. Um, so some areas of growth there, uh, students being prepared for college and career per the community. Uh, differentiation to meet the needs of all students, um, recruitment of substitutes. And then an on, and, and I, this one, we were, I think we captured it correctly. It might is, is having a consistent onboarding for any, when we're hiring people and onboarding process, which is really hard in a district like ours, because we don't have an H R department. So when you bring people on and we're having them do, um, you know, save schools and those different things, but like, do we have training for substitutes to come in and like help them? If you new substitute, help them how, you know, come in, establish, you know, their place in the classroom, handle classroom management. What did they do in the building with procedures, those different kinds of things? Culture was the third category we asked questions under. Um, the areas of strange that teachers are dedicated to helping students was parents, students and staff. All was scored very high. But in area growth was teachers being dedicated to helping students per the community. Um, that, that an area of strength is the district respects culture and the cultures of our students. And that concerns are addressed by staff. That was why, by first students and staff, that was positively reported. Uh, we didn't ask that kind of question to the community because it wouldn't really relate to them. The fourth area is systems. So in our systems, communication was, uh, again, we hear about communication, but communication with students and parents, including student progress is an area of strength for parents and students. Um, students know where to go for help and tracking students' product, progress were listed, where it came out as areas of strength. And errors or growth was, that was listed. Um, and this was board support for staff and student needs. Communication with all stakeholders, class size reduction and the multi-tiered system of supports. Um, Brian referred to that and that's that system. If we have a student academically who is struggling, what's the next step to help them? And if that doesn't work, what's the next step to help them? And it's a thing, same thing for social, emotional. If that student is struggling emotionally, what, what do we, what's the next step to help them? If that doesn't work, what's the next step? So it's that, that tier that, that he was referring to. Um, the last one we did related to resources. So, you know, what kinds of projects are we putting our money? Um, areas of strength that people indicated they felt like they had access to resources and materials that was students and staff. Um, facilities were clean and maintained and the adoption of the new K, A, E L A, K five curriculum came up as positive in, in the focus group quite a bit. People, even though it's been hard and challenging for them, that's been, that was been received quite well. Areas of growth and improvement with our resources would be our playground conditions. There were quite a few things listed in, as actual facilities, they felt needed attention, but these four were, were in order. The most, the most response, Art Fiker, old P H S, H M S and tennis courts came up the most, but there's other things too. But those were the, the four that had the most responses. And of course, funding for mental health services. So there are pages and pages and pages of survey responses and focus group information, which we can share with you. We tried to summarize it to make it a little bit easier to digest to them. Any questions?
So what's the next step?
So we had, we had, uh, quantitative data that we presented to the board and this is more qualitative. Um, so surveys and some focus groups and anecdotal evidence. And so what we'll do is, uh, we'll be putting that together. And then of course establishing a group of people like a committee to study some of those things and have discussions. And then we'll be, um, doing kind of a compression planning, uh, exercise with these different stakeholders to come up with a strategic plan. And so, um, of course, you know, now that we have all this information and these different sources and some of the overlap, we'll organize it. And, uh, I'd asked the board to think about who they would like, um, to include as stakeholders in this strategic planning. So, um, we'll be creating a list of people and, uh, yeah.
Hi, Elisa was proactive and sent me a pretty good sized list or sent both of us a list. Um, and it was super helpful because she included names, emails and phone numbers. And if you have folks that you think would be interested, because that way we can build a list for contact. I and if we have crossover, that's fine. We'll sort that all out. Um.
What we're doing is looking at, um, I think getting a diverse, you know, finding a diverse cross section of the community. Um, because one of the, one of the things that we'll do after we get this plan established, of course, is this idea of mobilizing, right? And so how do we put this plan into action? So there will be organizational changes. There will be resource allocation changes. Um, it, this plan will dictate a lot within our district. So to try and find those stakeholders that do have an opinion and have ideas about things. Have a really constructive conversation and start to put some stuff down on paper. I think our publishing date, when we were planning on being done was the end of February or sometime in February. And so we're coming up on, um, having a. And so we're coming up on um having a large scale, yeah. Large scale uh compression planning meeting and getting some of these ideas down on paper after. I think the kind of the portion of the self-study um is done. We have multiple information sources that we've pulled from. Um and they say some of the same thing, like the healthy use survey data. Uh tells the same tale as people saying that there's a mental health concern, right, so.
And we'll want a committee that's balanced with um community. Staff. Parents, you know, that that represent a lot of different areas, students for some of our o- our older students. And and a realistic working group is probably, I mean, it's going to be a large group, so but you're you're worth, you know, you we thinking that. You know, sixty to a hundred range um of people, it's a lot of people, but. When you do the work and we will, we will do some work together, but we'll do some breakout work in these four categories, four, five areas. So be thinking about that, it might be someone who has a really um. A good bent towards the resources side, you know, that might be someone and and we'll do some of that, you know. Work through it, it may be people being assigned, but we do need good balance of, you know, elementary, middle school, high parents, parents from. You know, we have our our parents, Eric's gonna give has given names, he's gonna give me names from his migrant. We did um his migrant parent group, but we want to make sure we have a good representation, our committee should be representative of our community and our s- our and our student community.
Any other comments?
I'll be collecting, I will be putting out a form, collect information from staff who would be interested in participating, so.
So we're looking first of the year?
Um we we will need names, you know, shortly after the first of the year because. We want to give people a lot of notice when we're asking for a quantity of their time, so yes, if you um could get the names to me. At when we return back from the holidays that week after the holidays, that would be great.
Anything else you want to add, Matt?
Um no, all I can go into kind of my report, so when we think about this and I'll send it on to the board. Um there's some gray literature from uh C E E. Uh Center of Educational Effectiveness and so they. They were one of the entities that had proposed to do the strategic plan for us. Um after we said, we're going to construct our own, they said. Just keep in mind that we offer other services and one of those services is around evaluation of implementation. So a lot of their evaluation is around perceptual data and doing data dashboards. And so if we have, say, a strategic plan that says we're going to do improve our math outcomes. Um then they can take snapshots of, you know, over time, how the district did and then actually do survey data. And then it really becomes a um public accountability piece, right, so how are we doing with that? And so with any, with any plan, we really have a conversation somewhere along the way of. Evaluating its effectiveness, how are we progressing as leaders? This is something we're going to do, um so send that off to the board. Uh this week we did um have an opportunity to select a Crystal Apple Award winner for the district. We'll be releasing that information tomorrow or Friday. Um. Just an update on uh Boys and Girls Club, we have the uh opportunity to meet with Brian Ace. Um kind of around uh finishing up or coming to some agreement for the. Um vo- voc egg building at old P H S. Um he he wants to write a letter um to the board. Just about kind of a position statement, uh where the Boys and Girls Club is. Um is the board starts to consider uh the negotiated agreement with Boys and Girls Club. And so he asked us to hold off on presenting until January eleventh. Um after, what was it, um was it Tuesday or what Monday you guys came in? Peggy, Tuesday. So right after the crystal, all that to say that right after the Crystal Apple Awards, we selected the winner. Um Amy had set up a meeting with Architects West um and C S G. And Peggy and Jeannie were there for the Crystal Apple Awards and uh then actually just were able. Just kind of by coincidence to sit in on a meeting um with C S C S G and Architects West about. Kind of the scope of Art Fiker and improvements and what that would look like and different options we would have to the district and so. Uh um we are continuing to try and have conversations about that. Uh. I'll just say a couple more things, the Eric Lares is in the audience and I had down here, there's a pack meeting on Friday. But um I'm sure it'll be great and they'll have great food, if you have an opportunity. Um our our migrant parents would love to see you.
What's your, what's your presentation, what's your presenter, your speaker?
So I think we had uh originally scheduled Northwest Justice. Uh Senator come and speak to us, but because we changed the day because of the climate weather. It is now going to be uh presenting on high school credits from Erica Alvarez. And making sure that students understand kind of where they're at and then we had. Can't think off the top of my head, but Selena Hazard, who's in charge of our pack. Um meetings, she brought in another. It's going to come in, I believe it has to do uh finance, uh financial literacy and so. How to ensure that you can fund education for your students as they take that next step. What things you consider, you know, in your household budget to help support student.
So um. I don't speak Spanish, um but. Uh our parents, even though I can't communicate well with them, our parents love to see. School officials there. Um so if you have an opportunity to show up, one of the other things I was going to say in mentioning that was Eric has been doing a lot of the. A lot of the lifting with the strategic plan, um so he's been a great help in that and um I just wanted to thank him publicly for that. And then the last piece um that I had was um we're still kind of battling. There's a mix of stuff going around from the flu to this R S V to COVID. And uh we're still kind of battling some of that with staff members getting sick as well as students getting sick. Um and uh trying to keep everybody healthy and in the classroom, so.
Well, thank you, Eric, why don't you tell everybody when and where?
So this Friday, six P M at the House Middle School will be in northern South.
Thanks, sir. All right, board member reports, Lisa.
Well, tomorrow night here, the auditorium is the scholarship information night and that's being held by former foster teacher, Crapid Elper. With some other retired um foster high school teachers and community members that are you know feeling. Trying to help fill the void by, you know, position that wasn't. Still by the district and Linda de la Desma retired, um I'll be there for Rotary, I sit on a couple other scholarship committees, but what they're putting together is just. Information about the local scholarship opportunities that are available and to increase the applications, I can tell you. Um I've sat on different community scholarship committees probably for the last. Gosh, eight years at least, I don't know. And you can see the decline in application, you know, would go from thirty five, thirty five, forty applications from one scholarship to like two or three. So the information clearly wasn't getting out there or just, um you know, maybe it was too intimidating to apply, but. There is so much money available in this community for students and. I always want to throw out the generosity of this community and people. You know, lived really meager lifestyle and could have lived lavish lifestyle like Edgar Whitehead, for example, to, you know. Support, you know, what has now been, you know. Five million dollars distributed with an initial investment of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars twenty years ago, so it's, I think. Whitehead, I think the community members and especially think the group putting this together tomorrow night, seven P M, the auditorium. Spent a lot of time in the auditorium lately, I was cut through four nutcrackers, almost sold out, most of them nutcracker performances in the auditorium. And I was there last night for the band concert, it was standing room only at six. Um it was wonderful, such incredible music then by our band students, um. They emceed um in English and Spanish to explain everything and what the students and the learning and what the different music is, that was very interesting and very well done. Um I did think it was too bad that we have so few music presentations and they were both programs and they were both, you know, last night, the second grade. And the high school, um I did hear from some parents of not second graders that were asking, when when do they get to see their kid be adorable um and perform and I hope. That something is coming soon. And that is my update tonight.
Thank you, Peggy.
Um. Couple of things I have enjoyed, um my kids have all left the nest and their kids are all left the nest now. Uh and but our neighbor is in the seventh grade and so I've enjoyed going to the middle school and watching middle school seventh grade basketball. And that's been a lot of fun and it's been a long time since I've been in the gym and watched seventh grade basketball, but that has been a lot of fun and uh. Um brought back a lot of memories and then the other day I helped with with Crystal Apple. Um selection and that was, I'm pretty excited about that, but it's a secret. Uh and then I afterwards, Jeannie and I sat in on a a meeting with um. Uh discussion on Art Biker Stadium and kind of. The next step where where we can go or where, you know, what that future. Uh the future of that process needs to be. Um and that's all. Yeah, it's a long ways down the road, but it's something that has to be addressed, so. Um yeah, I'm ready for the holidays. Yeah, thank you.
Jason?
Um a couple, I had one thing, but now I'm going to have, I'm going to speak on two. Um. A few months ago, we we brought forth the discipline policy at a work session to go over kind of a read that. Um I. I haven't heard anything where that process is last that if I my memory serves me well. I thought we were going to take it back to like the admin team from teachers or something like that, but. I just would like to see what the process, where we're at with that, or if we can re. Restart the process to review that and make additions or um. Uh adoptions or whatever.
Yeah, reengage, yeah.
Yep.
Um then. Lastly would be the. You know, this the the talk with the C I G and the other outfit about Art Fiker. Um I think this is part of a broader um. Conversation that we need to have as a board. Um on facilities and a facilities plan moving forward. We all know that our fighter needs it, I mean, you drive by it every day, but we have a ton of different facilities.
Oh.
And you know, we we've got all these things that, you know, different buildings, different lands, stuff like that, I think it needed, I think it bodes to have a. Either a a work session devoted entirely to building a facilities plan. And a direction going forward, so we actually have a plan versus, you know. Whatever you guys talked about in this meeting, because I think it's. It's going to take a lot of discussion and planning and financial. Um you know, looking at the finances of this to to get it going. So I I would really like, I know we've talked about doing retreats, but I think it's time if we're. And if we're doing this, we need to actually start to work on this facility conversation. And talk about our land and stuff like that or other.
Yeah, so they they're coming up with some um. I'll call them some perspectives around budget projects, all that stuff, but what it will look like. Is basically like a multi-year, we're talking like three or four or five years. So like, yeah, like a five-year plan, but then there will be.
I get that.
Yeah.
But we also have what was, and I, well, it's right here, I mean, it's in this deal, we have Art Fiker, old P H S. And the H M S uh or or H M S and the tennis courts are the top five that our community has discussed. You know, if if Art Fiker's five years down the road.
What can we do now?
We could do something maybe at the tennis courts today, but being able to prioritize that, not just look at our Fiker, but look at everything.
Yep.
Um but I I get what you're saying, I I mean, I know it's a process, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would agree with that and um. Uh we had. There was some work that had been done once upon a time, but um. I mean, we have, we have things that we've discussed as a board. From sprinkler systems at H M S and heights. Um and getting that going and so like exactly what you're saying, you're exactly right. It's a layered process that we can stagger projects, but it's it's a. Having an idea, having some funding, knowing if we have to liquidate land, knowing, I mean, money sources. It it all factors in, but it's a. We we can definitely and we can loop the board in as soon as we start getting that information flowing. From those stakeholders and really start to define something. And then once we have it in place, whether that's a component of the strategic plan or not. It'll just be sticking to it and trying to hit timelines and things like that.
That's all, thank you.
I want to follow up on that. I think when you're having a meeting about these things, it can't just be two board members that happens either, it should it should be all of us using the same information, because what's going to happen. Is that those two board members are going to go out in the community and say, hey, this is what we're talking about and then we're going to see them, we're going to be like. I I've never heard of that, um we need to be getting the same information. And you know, when you're being called for, you know, sit in, Amy always asks me if I'm available for interviews. But you know, I wasn't asked for the A D interview, I wasn't asked for the maintenance interview, I wasn't asked for Crystal Apple and it, the opportunity should be presented to all of us. So we all know what's happening, so the same thing goes out the community, why did you want to pick this Crystal Apple worker? Well, I don't know, I didn't even know we were meaning to talk about it, it needs to be all of us on the same pan, page, same time, all the time.
Okay.
Well, especially when we come to things like the planning.
Yeah.
We. We have to answer to the public, so if if one or two people has, hey, this is what I want done. And nobody else knew about it, we we all need to sit down and have. You know, our top ten, this is, this is where we need to start and move move forward.
I actually all apologize for that, yeah, and typically we would invite the whole board and have an entire board conversation. It was just really habit stance that they were there and um. The, you know, conversations like that can be complex because you don't want to proceed without. Board approval and so um they, you know, they were there and uh I felt like it was appropriate to invite them, but from here on out. We'll try and have a a complete conversation with all board members.
Well, fair enough, um I don't really have anything tonight, uh if there's no other comments.
So I don't know if you're aware, but we had a pair educator pass away. Jennifer Marheys, she hasn't been with us for a really long time, but unfortunately was fell ill just right before Thanksgiving. Um and then passed away um recently and so we have a request.
So her um. Her funeral is this weekend, um her family did. And allow us to share this information with the community, so anybody who would like to attend is welcome to. And it's at Sunnyside Christian Church Church and in Sunnyside on December seventeenth from one to two P M. Um for the memorial and two P M will be the reception and refreshment. And there will be a mill train um for them going, starting in January, so after the holiday. And to help, you know, the family adjust and just show our support. What's your name?
Jennifer Marheys.
It said something as a district, did we, are we going to?
Yeah. A condolence, we sent a condolence card and then we're, Jody's working on some efforts within her building. Because she was a Heights uh employee.
Well, with that, that brings us to adjournment, uh next meeting is a study session on the twenty first, uh we're going to save the meeting for that one.
Save it for debate this one.
So we may. But twenty first.
Start a vacation, isn't it?
They actually.
It is, isn't it?
Starts to the.
Vacation.
Sounds like really. You should know.
What? No, wow, oh, and the surplus, I want to do things. Drive them right. I forgot to mention that.
It's all covered in so nice.
That, I did that, in that.